Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
SCTV's live coverage of Falmouth Select Board meetings is brought to you in part by John's Liquors, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.
Good evening. I'd like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, June 17th, 2024, and it is exactly 5:30. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Public Works; discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Police Patrol Federation; discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Police Lieutenants.
So move.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Miss Galli, aye.
Goldstone, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye. And the Select Board will return to public session at 6:30. And welcome to this open session of the Falmouth Select Board. It is January 17th, 2024, and it is exactly 6:30. The Board is returning from executive session where we have reached agreements with respect to collective bargaining with Public Works, with respect to collective bargaining with our Police Patrol Federation, and with respect to collective bargaining with our Police As we open this meeting, I would ask you to please silence your cell phones and please check that they are silenced. And secondly, please notify me as the chair if you are audio or video recording this open meeting session, and the placement and operation of any equipment used to record this meeting shall not interfere with conducting this meeting. I would ask you all to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this evening, we're going to kick this off with a proclamation honoring the service of Rabbi Elias Lieberman. Rabbi Lieberman, okay, you're not going to sit back there. Come to the podium, please. Can't hide back there. We can't see you. Whereas June 30th, 2024 marks the retirement of Rabbi Elias Lieberman after 34 years of distinguished service as a spiritual leader of the Falmouth Jewish Congregation, and whereas Rabbi Lieberman has led by example in warmly welcoming all members to the Falmouth Jewish Congregation, providing a sense of belonging and inclusion, and whereas Rabbi Lieberman has, over many years, also extended a welcome to the broader community to worship, Passover Seder's, Holocaust Remembrance Day, Sukkot, educational offerings, and whereas Rabbi Lieberman has led and modeled a commitment to social justice, engaging Falmouth Jewish Congregation in Tikim Olam, Hebrew Repair of the World, in multiple ways, supporting local agencies such as the Falmouth Service Center, the Housing Assistance Corporation, the Barnstable County Human Rights Commission, and belonging to each other, amongst others. And whereas Rabbi Lieberman has modeled an unwavering commitment to social justice through leadership of these and many other causes. No Place for Hate, Falmouth Compassion and Choices, Suicide Prevention, LBGTQ Rights, Affordable Housing, and whereas Rabbi Lieberman has taught Judaism to youth and adults alike, to members of the Jewish congregation, and to our community, expanding understandings of this ancient and diverse religion as it was in the past and it is lived and as it is lived in the present. And whereas Rabbi Lieberman has brought to his distinguished service qualities of compassion, attentive listening, warm and deep dedication to serving others, now therefore be it resolved that we, Nancy Robbins Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Missgalli, and Heather M. H. Goldstone, as member of the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby issue this proclamation in recognition of Rabbi Lieberman's decades of contributions to the Town of Falmouth, celebrate him on the occasion of his retirement, and wish him continued success and fulfillment in his endeavors. Mazel tov. And in witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed.
Members of the Select Board, Falmouth friends, I am deeply touched and honored by this. It touches me deeply. It has been such a great privilege to be able to play out my career in Falmouth. I arrived in 1990, had no sense of how long I might be here. The time has flown by. The congregation saw its way to keep me employed. I never did anything too terrible that would have caused me to be dismissed, but I'm looking forward to living out my retirement in Falmouth. I'm a member of the Commission on Substance Use, and I look forward to having more time to devote to that. And I just can't thank you enough for helping create such a wonderful community that I've been privileged to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. It's going to be a hard one to follow. Any recognitions from the Board? Mr. Missgalli?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to recognize that our colleague Doug Brown, last Friday, was elected president of the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association, and he will be serving for one year, starting now, I guess.
That's right.
So good luck and thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate that. Good job.
Any other recognitions from the Board? Okay, moving on. We'll get into announcements. Any announcements for the public from the Board? Mr. Brown?
I have one that's not exactly an announcement, but just to reach out to the public to say anybody that has any extra time, especially if you're a veteran, the Veteran Center is now open and they have some availability for some slots for folks. You would have to have a Cory background check, but other than that, anybody that has anything to share with our local veterans who are looking for somebody to talk to once in a while? Give that some thought.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other announcements? Mr. Missgalli?
Yeah, just two. I think that there will be a Juneteenth celebration at St. Barnabas Church this Wednesday from 1:00 to 3:00. And there will also be a Pride Celebration Event at the Gus Canty Center Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
There will also be Juneteenth celebrations at Highfield Hall and Gardens, I believe, beginning at 10 o'clock on Wednesday as well. So lots of options.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening, and your comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Is anyone here for public comment? Mr. Neto, please. I thought that was you.
What did we do wrong now?
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here tonight representing the people of East Falmouth that would like this Board of Selectmen to consider traffic--
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joe Neto, Precinct 9.
Thank you.
Again, those of us in East Falmouth aware of the pending construction and replacement and construction of a new bridge at Menard Beach. This is approximately a two-year project, and the Shore Road from Falmouth Heights to Central Avenue, or Davisville, or Acapescot, however you want to come back on 28, will be blocked, and all the traffic will either come down Davisville or Acapescot. I've talked to Department of Public Works Superintendent Mr. McCarney, and the bid specs have not been finalized. So the town could specify in the bid specs that we have traffic mitigation, especially between the hours of 3:30 and 5:00, and 8:30, 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock in the morning. 10 years, approximately 10 years ago, the intersection was redesigned and new traffic lights were installed at Davisville and Route 28. I attended the State's DPW meeting on that, and the traffic engineer at that time stated, "We've counted the cars that go through that intersection, and there's 20," this was 10 years ago, "there's 20,000 cars a morning that go through East Falmouth." And he said jokingly, "I don't even want to tell you what the number is in the summertime because you probably wouldn't believe me." Currently, if you try to get through East Falmouth now, especially after the pandemic, from 3:30 to 5:00, traffic is backed up easily to the top of Oxbow. In the summertime, it goes to Falmouth Lumber.
Your two minutes are up, Mr. Neto.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate thoughts on that to try to alleviate that traffic congestion at Acapescot Policeman or something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, we, oh, Mr. Shearer.
You'd never know it was such a nice day out because it's so cold in here. I had to go out and get a jacket. I'm Dan Shearer, Precinct 6. First of all, I'm going to do something that I usually don't do, and thank somebody and congratulate them, and that's our little fire station in West Falmouth. We have been, we had, around the area of Old Dock Road, we've had three 911 calls, and the fire engine had arrived in each of them under five minutes, which I think is very good, and I congratulate them. All three of them needed an ambulance. I don't know how long it took to get the ambulance from North Falmouth, but I am very glad that they were being taken care of quickly from the little fire station. That's not why I came, how, when I came tonight is because we need some help in West Falmouth. And the police, I mean, the State Traffic Department has done a very nice job. They have come down here to the West Falmouth Village Association, which I'm a member of, have been for years, and talked to us. They have redesigned the walkway around Old Dock Road and put up a few signs, and now we need the Selectmen to help out. We, what they put in bumps in the road, so people would notice that they're supposed to slow down, but they don't seem to do it. And we have problems there. I'm not going into all the problems. I wrote all the problems down, and my wife said, "If you read that tonight, they'll shoot you."
And you've reached your two minutes, Mr. Shearer.
Well, the one thing we need is noise right now. Our neighborhood is getting motorcycled to death and has been for four or five years. I have asked police chiefs in the past to come and sit on my outdoors for a few minutes.
Mr. Shearer, I'm going to have to cut you off. You're way over your two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we got the drift, though.
I should have done that.
Is anyone else here for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our committee interviews. And firstly, we have our Regulatory Board, the Historical Commission, Annie Dean. Welcome. Anything on your application or not on your application that you would like to address with the Board?
No.
Any questions from the Board?
No, I would just note that she's already serving on the Commission and seems to be doing a good job, so I would move reappointment.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for reappointment. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Thank you very much. Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals, Dee Scott Peterson.
Madam Chair, I spoke with, as their liaison, I spoke with Mr. Peterson today, and unfortunately, they're getting ready for a procedure that his wife is having. I don't want to go too much more into it, but he's sorry that he can't make it, but he is, he's willing and able to seek reappointment.
Okay, we will schedule him for July 1st. It is a Regulatory Board, so I think we do need to do an interview.
I would recommend that, yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into nonregulatory boards. Bicycle and Ped Committee, Michael Taylor. Mr. Taylor, is there anything that is not on your application that you would like the Board to know about you?
Yeah, sort of. On my application, I mentioned that I am an avid runner. I think that uniquely sets me up to be a member of the committee, and I can bring a lot of what I have to the table to help them as a liaison into the running community in Falmouth. Every Wednesday, I go to the Wednesday night track workouts. Every Friday, I run with Ken Gardner's group, so I think I'd be pretty good at bringing their needs for the community into this committee.
Sure, bridging both of those worlds. Any questions of Mr. Taylor?
I like that aspect of the position, and I think his application is complete. I would move appointment, Mr. Taylor.
There's three applicants in one position.
Go ahead.
I didn't want to interrupt.
Sorry, you're right.
Madam Chair and Board, I should have made this, I should have prefaced, we have three applicants--
Excuse me.
--in one position for this evening's appointment.
Yes, so we will need to interview all.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Any questions of Mr. Taylor? Okay, thank you. Next on our list is Mitchell Flaherty. Anything you would like us to know about you that is not on your application?
I do not believe so.
Any questions of Mr. Flaherty from the Board? Ms. Goldstone?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could provide a little bit more detail about the school projects that you worked on in Boulder?
Yeah, so I went to school in Boulder, Colorado. They have a really good bike network there, so I was firsthand experiencing that. And some of those things I got to take into the classroom. So one of the projects, we dove into historical projects of how the bike network started in the '60s and how it grew. So I think that's important, you know, get a foothold, start somewhere. Another one we had was merging comedy and climate science together. A lot of time, it's doom and gloom, global warming, so we tried to spin that a little bit and get people more involved, so we used comedy. And for my comedic sketch, it's cycled around bicycles and some of the experiences, good and bad, you have on a bike.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
Have you had an opportunity to be at any of the committee meetings?
Yes. I started going this February, and I've been able to go to each one every month. Starting to make friends with the people there, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next applicant is Stephen Morris. Is Mr. Morris here? Did we know that Mr. Morris would not?
No, ma'am, I'm sure we did not have any notification.
Okay, so the question to the Board is, do you want to put off voting so that we can interview Mr. Morris, or would you like to move ahead?
I would like to wait. I'm sorry, I have to admit, I didn't pay attention. There was only one position. I should have read this a little more carefully and had questions better prepared.
Okay, so we will interview Mr. Morris also on July 1st and make our decision at that time?
Okay.
Is that what the Board would like to do?
Yes, please.
Okay, so thank you for coming, and we will make our decision on July 1st. Okay, moving on to the Council on Aging, Karen Dusini. Did I say that right, Karen? Is there anything that you would like the Board to know about you that is not on your application?
I think you pretty much have it. I have volunteered over 700 hours today, and it's an amazing place for this.
Wow, awesome. Good for you. Any questions of Mr. Dusini?
No.
Okay.
Very well qualified.
700 hours, I guess.
That's a lot.
What she's doing.
Move her appointment?
I'll second Mr. Missgalli's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, and thank you for your willingness to serve. We have another opening. Mr. Vera? Welcome, Mr. Vera. Is there anything that you would like the Board to know that is not on your application?
No, I think it's probably pretty straightforward.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Vera?
Do you know anything about the Council on Aging? I would move Mr. Vera's appointment for period ending, should have had it ready, 27. Yeah, June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
No. That's four to one. Thank you. All right, Fresh Pond's Advisory Committee, Angela Tanner. Is Angela here? Welcome.
Thank you, good evening.
Okay, and anything that you would like us to know about you that is not on your application?
No, I think everything's there.
Ecological landscape. I like that in your resume and the work that you do around that. Any questions or comments? Mr. Missgalli?
So this is for an alternate member, is that correct?
I believe it is.
There has been some discussion possibly changing that setup. Would you be, if it went that way, willing to serve as a full member at some point in time as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? I'd entertain a motion. Move to appoint Angela Tanner for, as an alternate on the Freshwater Pond's Advisory Committee with a term ending 6/30/25.
I'll second Ms. Goldstone's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Water Quality Management Committee, Jonathan Kaufman. Welcome, Mr. Kaufman. I'll ask you the same thing I've asked everybody else. Is there anything that is not on your resume that you would like the Board to know about you?
I guess I would add that I've been attending the bimonthly meetings of the Water Quality Committee for about a year now, and I've gained a pretty good understanding of the magnitude and scale of problems that are facing the community with respect to water quality, and I think my background in geology might add a unique twist to the current slate of skills that the Board has.
Okay, thank you. Hydrologic modeling. I couldn't even tell you what that is. It's on your resume.
Where's water going to go?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Brown.
It's very important for this committee.
Any questions?
I don't think I have questions. I would comment that I agree with Mr. Kaufman. I think this knowledge could be very useful for wastewater planning.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to appoint, to appoint Mr. Kaufman to a term ending June 30th, 2027, to the Water Quality Management.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay, Task Force on Workforce Sustainability. First up, Paul Spear. Anything you'd like to tell us about yourself?
No. I think it's all there.
You guys are easy. Any questions from the Board? Comments from the Board?
Just to clarify--
Go ahead.
This is between seven and nine positions, and we have eight applicants, I believe.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Spear?
Yes, I guess this is not specifically for Mr. Spear, but there are eight applicants. The Task Force Charter as written does call for representation of a diversity of sectors and employers, and my reading of the applications is that we have eight applicants, at least six of whom are affiliated with the Marine Biological Laboratory, and I guess my inclination would be to work on recruitment so that we have a slate of applicants for this task force that fit that bill of representing a diversity of sectors and employers.
I think that's a really great point. My only concern would be we've had a hard time trying to put this group together. This is the second round, so I guess I will leave that decision to the Board, but your point is very well taken.
Are we, are we limited to a two-year term, or would it be possible to make the term a one-year term and try to make the recruitment that we're talking about? I don't--
This is a single, yeah, single-purpose committee dissolved by 1/20, July 1st, 2026, so you're asking if it could be a one-year?
I'm just, that might be kind of a compromise. We could try to recruit a little bit--
I think we could do that.
--and still, you know, still get the committee up and running.
And still get it off the ground. Very good point. I think we could do that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment that I think that Ms. Goldstone's concern with that is well-founded. It was a good catch, reading the requirements.
But the only concern I would have with limiting it to one year is that this group is going to get up and running, and then we're going to have them run again and break them up and run one more year. It might be counterproductive, I would say.
I think we need to get it off the ground and get it going, and I agree with you, and I also agree with Ms. Goldstone that it is, there is one section of town that is highly represented. However, having said that again, we've had a lot of difficulty trying to get this off the ground, and this is a way that at least we could get it started. I think the group would have to be open to looking at diversifying a little bit, and maybe we could check that in a year. But I totally see the concern-- maybe we could check that in a year. But I totally see the concerns. Ms. Goldstone?
A possible idea, given that the representation of the current applicants is very heavy from the science institution, and also recognizing that many of the people that we might wish to have represented on this task force are likely to have the least time and means to participate in such a task force. Would it be possible to, I know this is beyond the scope of specifically considering applicants, but to direct the work of the task force to collect data, conduct a survey, something of that sort, to gather input from those other folks who have not showed up to actually be members of the task force?
I'm sure that we could accommodate that. I think what we need to do, however, is we need to interview our applicants and then maybe have this conversation as we then go to vote. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let's, if we don't have any questions for Mr. Spear, we can let him sit and go through our applications and have this conversation. Do I vote?
Could I make one?
Absolutely.
I mean, I completely, that's a great point. And I'm happy to actually not be part of this, but I'm also happy to help out and try to, you know, work if there's something that we can do to get help recruit, you know, a more diverse group of folks. I'm happy to help out on that.
Okay, well, we're not going to accept your resignation just yet. Okay, we're gonna hold that for a minute.
I almost got it in there.
I appreciate that. Sit down, please.
Going to Lyndon Johnson on us.
All right, Paula Stone. Don't go anywhere. Paula Stone. Welcome, Ms. Stone.
Hello.
Is there anything you would like to know about, the board to know about you that is not on your applications?
I'm not a scientist. I don't work at MBL. And I'm retired.
Sounds good.
Great. Any questions?
I felt like, when I read the applications, all the people seemed very qualified for this. So I didn't pick up on the fact that they were all working at MBL, so thank you for that.
I did, and that was definitely a concern, that I think five of them are.
But you are a docent.
Yes, well, if that's a volunteer job, yes.
Thank you.
Don't count it against her.
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Faiman Silva? Anything that you would like us to know about you that is not on your application?
I'd certainly like you to know that I don't take no for an answer. So I do want to take issue.
Do you think that we don't know that?
I just wanted to remind you.
Go ahead.
In terms of your analysis of the potential membership, yes, there are some MBL folks. But the diversity, I think, of this community, of this committee is very rich. We have researchers, we have parents, we have people who have been homeless, who are housing-challenged, who approach this issue from many points of view. We have seniors, including myself and Mr. Spear. He is, his background is very unique and essential. We have members of the LGBTQ+ community and other people who are members of minority groups. So I really think that your arguments are misinformed.
Okay, they're not arguments, they're observations.
And some of these people are from HOE, not MBL, and I know MBL.
Do you want to say anything about your application to this committee? That's the question.
I was very impressed with the content of the applicant pool. And I have worked really hard to get this committee organized.
I'm going to ask you one more time. Is there anything else? You just keep going, but is there anything else you want us to know about your application?
I have a more than 30-year career as a researcher, scholar, professor, community activist. I've published extensively in areas of political economy, Native North American cultures, Latin America, indigenous peoples, LGBTQ+, anthropology of women. So I've, and I feel that I can bring a lot of research background to this committee, although I don't want to chair the committee, so I'm hoping that we will have somebody who will come forward. I really will be disappointed if we put roadblocks. It has taken three years to get to this.
I understand. We're talking about your application.
And the housing, the sustainable workforce problem is worse now than ever.
It's the board's opportunity to ask you questions about your application. Does, no. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Faiman Silva? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going. Hannah Vander Schurren. Did I say that right? Awesome. Welcome. Is there anything on your application, or that isn't on your application, that you would like the board to know about you?
No, I'm just really pleased to see this happening and to have the opportunity to potentially serve. And like you addressed, like, I won't need, I don't need to go into it very much, but I think a big interest of ours is bringing people from different professional backgrounds and different backgrounds related to housing into the fold. And even though the representation definitely looks skewed one way, I think personally, it is a concern for me, and I would like to do everything that we can to make this representative.
Awesome. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Neela Louviano. Welcome.
Thank you.
Aparicio.
Yeah.
Is there anything that you would like the board to know about you that is not on your application?
Yeah. I'm a young scientist from the MBL. I'm representing a sector of the MBL that are visiting scientists, which are scientists that come from over the world. We are normally not from the US. Of course, there are also many young scientists that are from the US. But we come from other continents sometimes, and we face many problems such as find affordable housing. And as people as me that have a family, we have many problems in finding childcare providers and all that. So that is why I want to serve in these.
Awesome. Any questions?
No, not for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Benjamin Weiss. Welcome. Is there anything that you would like the board to know that is not included on your application?
Yes, there are a couple brief points that I wanted to make. So as part of your criteria, that you talked about wanting for this task force, you encouraged applicants from a range of industries, as we've talked about, and especially those from diverse perspectives. And as a robotics engineer at HOE, not MBL, slightly different, who is also an active member of the LGBTQ community in Falmouth, I checked those boxes. But one thing that I didn't speak to is another criteria you discussed, wanting folks that have experience in childcare, business management, and the delivery of services for low-income households and working families. So I wanted to briefly mention an experience that I don't think was disclosed in my application, where in college I was deeply involved in an organization called Havenly, which is a cafe on a mission to support refugee and immigrant women to break out of cycles of poverty through job training, placement, and community building. The reason why I wanted to bring this up is because I think it's a really great example of an organization where a group of people who have looked at a workforce, identified a series of problems, generated a creative list of solutions, and then actually implemented them. All this is happening out of a bakery that serves as a community center and a classroom, and was a really powerful example, I think, of how this kind of change can come about. And that was a single organization. Thinking about what we can do at the town level is, I think, really exciting. And I continue to look to the leadership, even though I graduated a few years ago, to serve as a continued example of that kind of thing. To briefly address the point that Ms. Goldstone brought up, I'm also one of the co-chairs of our Committee for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And in that capacity, I work in collaboration with a coalition that's newly formed in Falmouth of a variety of organizations serving different populations, who all seek to make Falmouth a more welcoming place for all sorts of different people. And so my hope is that even though I come from the scientific community, to leverage those sorts of spaces that are sort of cross-organizational in Falmouth, to uplift the voices that we're actually trying to serve in addition to the members of our community as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
No, I like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Miranda, is Miranda White?
Just like voting.
Vote. Awesome, thank you. Anything that you would like to share with the board that isn't on your application?
Yes. Since applying, and for the summer and probably fall as well, I'll be working as a server, so a different part of the workforce as well. But of course, I also work at MBL. So two sides of the workforce.
Awesome. Any questions from Miranda?
I think that's going to be good to have that additional work experience to bring to the conversation.
I loved your undergraduate honors thesis.
Oh, thank you. Are you interested in ants?
Urban ants. I just was fascinated. I thought that was awesome. Okay, thank you. And lastly, Max Jans. Welcome, Max.
No, she didn't. Out of order.
Welcome, how are you?
I'm doing great. How about you?
Very well. Anything that you would like the board to know that is not on your application?
Yeah, well, it is on there, but it bears repeating, I think, if you'll indulge me. I mean, I was one of those community members, I think they were trying to protect, who loves living here in Falmouth, but was unable to, was homeless for a short amount of time while I was living here. And I've had friends who've had to move away from diverse backgrounds, LGBTQ backgrounds, racial backgrounds, different religious backgrounds, because they said they couldn't see a future for themselves in Falmouth. And that's something that I'm particularly concerned about. And I know that the task force is mostly about the sustainability of our workforce, but that speaks to the health and the well-being of our town. And so I hope being from a background in labor, where I have to aggregate diverse interests among working people, but also having this like research and scientific background can help me serve on this committee.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
Can we move the list?
You certainly may.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to move the list to the Task Force on Workforce Sustainability as described in the agenda.
Would you consider the one year and then taking a look again? Or would you, are you doing it for two years?
Let me hold off on my motion and see what the rest of the colleagues think about that. We'll dig into that a little bit, and I'll add that as part of my motion, if that's all right with everybody.
I had mentioned concerns about the, you know, it's only a two-year job, and if we're going to stop it at one year. But maybe it is good to have the flexibility, as Mr. Spear said, maybe he'll find somebody and not mind being replaced in a year. Maybe there'll be some other folks who'll come along.
And maybe we can check in with the group in a year and see how it's moving along and think about their feedback as well. Yes, Ms. Goldstone?
Could there also be an option to, I hesitate to say this, because nine is, eight, nine is already a large task force, but could there be an option to expand the size of the group to allow, as Mr. Spear mentioned, this initial group to do some recruiting to potentially fill gaps and bring in other perspectives to complement the group?
I know that that also.
We could, and I think we could do alternates. I think there are a variety of ways to do it.
The board can vote to increase the number?
If we wanted to wait that year, period, or if you want to do that tonight, it's, I understand that the board has discretion as far as the number of members.
I would go with, as proposed, with this group of applicants for now. And then when it comes up to the year, if they want to mix and match traits and folks, or maybe add a few rather than people get off.
Okay.
It was my idea to make it one year, but I'll tell you, listening to them and hearing how articulate they are, all of them, and how passionate they are about the issue. You know, personally, I'd be fine if it happened for two years, but I do think, I do think trying to broaden it seems to be what everyone would like to do. So I think we, I'm comfortable still with the year.
With the one-year appointment.
Wonderful group of individuals and a very important committee.
And they have had a really hard time getting off the ground, so I'd like to see it get moving, get working, and let's reevaluate a year.
So we're at a year. So with that being said, I will repeat my motion with the caveat that we can amend it slightly to recognize the fact that the board can increase the size of its board once it's formed. Correct?
Yes. And we can increase it at any time, you know, based on if the board comes to us and says, you know, we've got a few other people who are interested, we'd like to include them, we'd like to increase the number.
So that would be my motion.
So there's your motion.
So are we going with the one year or two?
One.
We're doing the one year.
Okay.
I'll second Mr. Zalinski's motion as amended.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for serving. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so we're gonna move to the reappointment to non-regulatory boards, and I will quickly go through this. Unless, Mr. Renshaw, okay, affirmative action. Malane Chiato, term 6/30/27. Affordable Housing Committee, Chena Mapp, 6/30/27. Board of Assessors, Robert Dolan, 6/30/27. Cultural Council, Reema Petrosian, 6/30/27. Recreational Committee, Tommy Zine, 6/30/27. Okay, Parking Clerk, Patricia O'Connell, 6/30/25. Assistant Parking Clerk, Mary Ellen Loeb, 6/30/25.
I would move reappointment.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, we are a bit behind. We are going to move into the public hearing. Mr. Zalinski for the notice, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given under MGL C140 and 30 that the Town of Falmouth Select Board would conduct a public hearing to determine if there are violations of the lodging house license issued to Frederick William House located at 594 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, Mass. The hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, June 17th, 2024, at 6:45 PM. Nancy Robbins Taylor, Edmund P. Zalinski, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Mascali, Heather M. H. Goldstone.
Mr. Renshaw, I'm going to start with you, and then I assume someone is here for the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first point out to the board that Town Council has prepared a memo that you should all have to chairs that goes over some of the standards of review for tonight's hearing, as well as possible determinations and outcomes. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Madam Chair, Select Board members, as Vice Chair Zalinski just reported, the public hearing was properly advertised, noticed in the paper on Friday, June 7th of this year. On April 22nd, 2024, Select Board approved the renewal of the lodging house license for the Frederick William House, which is located at 594 Palmer Avenue. That license for reference, and a copy of that is included in your packets tonight, is license number 102-LH, Lima Henry. The license stipulated that the Frederick William House could operate a maximum of five rooms and only on, within the main house. The issued license is valid from May 1st of this year through April 30th of 2025. And Madam Chair and Select Board, during the April 22nd meeting, I wanted to make this point as well, the chair commented that the Select Board office had received complaints that more than five rooms were being rented, and that continued violations of the license would result in a hearing before the Select Board to consider whether there were violations of the license and any possible suspension or revocation of that license. On April 23rd, the Town Manager's Office sent a letter to the manager of Frederick William House. A copy of that letter is attached to your packets, indicating that the license that was issued on April 22nd allowed for the operation of five rooms within the main house only. The letter further identified that as of April 23rd, the establishment was advertising on the Frederick William House website six rooms to include the cottage suite, and this was a violation of the terms of the inholder license that had just been issued the day prior. The letter stated that failure to remove all advertising of any rooms in excess of the five licensed rooms, or any other showing of noncompliance with the terms of the license, would result in the issuance of a notice of violation and a hearing before the Select Board for consideration of revoking or suspending the license in accordance with MGL 140, Section 30. The letter was served on the establishment operator-owner, Ms. Robinson, by a Falmouth constable on April 25th. And Madam Chair and Select Board, a copy of the letter was also mailed at the request of the owner-operator of the Frederick William House to legal counsel for the establishment, Attorney P. Attorney P. Cook, on May 22nd, 2024. On May 3rd, in a butter to the Frederick William House, Jonathan Stronach, and I apologize if I've mispronounced the name, made a complaint to the building department alleging that the establishment was advertising for lodging the cottage house in violation of their license. And a copy of that complaint via email is attached to your packet. On May 23rd, the building department forwarded to my office a screenshot of the Frederick William House website, clearly showing that a Shining Sea Bikeway Cottage of approximately 1,388 square feet was being listed as an option to rent with the note that it sleeps six with two queen beds and one twin sofa, and a copy of that screenshot of that advertisement is also included in your packets. On May 23rd, the Shining Sea Bikeway Cottage was listed on the site, on the Frederick William House site, as we are sold out. The building department has submitted additional screenshots, which are also included as part of your packet this evening, of the Frederick William House website booking page showing the advertisement for lodging of the Shining Sea Bikeway Cottage. These screenshots indicate that as of June 5th, the Shining Sea Bikeway Cottage is booked for 14 days in the month of June, for 22 days in the month of July, for 11 days in the month of August, and for four days in the month of September 2024. And Madam Chair and Select Board, my recommendation, as you see in your packet following the public hearing and based upon the information that's received and presented, if the Select Board determines that the Frederick William House has violated the conditions of the lodging house license it issued back on April 22nd, then my office is recommending that the lodging house license issued to Frederick William House located at 594 Palmer Avenue be suspended for a period of 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Are you here for the applicant, sir?
Yes, I am. My name's Attorney Patrick Hook, representing-
Lift that mic up a little bit, thank you.
How's that, a little better?
Yeah, it's for people at home. Go ahead.
Attorney Patrick Hook, representing Ms. Jeanette Robinson, also formerly known as Ms. Jeanette Marquez, who's the proprietor-owner-operator, single mom with two teenage kids who lives and operates the Frederick William's House. I'm here to discuss with you and interact and figure out, one, to listen to what the concerns are, two, to make sure we have a common understanding of what the allegations or concerns are, and then, three, comply. That's what we're here for. She's running a small business, wants to keep running a small business, and very much that's the end that she's interested in getting to. One of the first concerns or questions that I have is the use of the word cottage. In 2004, when she submitted for her to start the business, she was working with the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals, she submitted to the Planning Board, the, what she is calling the cottage now might be a bad misnomer, name, because that's actually part of the dwelling, the main house dwelling. If you look at the Town Assessors information, it has the, the main house exists of seven rooms, six bathrooms, and whatnot. The cottage is part of that, that's what she's calling that. So, it's my concern is that people are believing that by the term cottage, it's referring to what used to be a bicycle shack, which what used to be then was an ice, in 2016, she received a modification to her special permit to sell ice cream and gifts at this shack outside. It's listed separately in the assessors, it's like about 450 square feet, much smaller, so it's not that shack. If that's being referred to as the, as a cottage, that's not it. She did seek a modification to her special permit about a year and a half ago, where she was seeking to have that added as a guest unit, increase the number of guest units, but she withdrew that, and she, she did not go forward but seeking to add that as an accommodation. So she has, she has more than, as you can tell by the assessors information, she has more than five rooms in the dwelling, in the main house dwelling. She does, she has never rented more than five at a time. She's allowed up to 18, as described in her license, and some similar language, I believe, in a special permit from 2004, but she's never had over 18 people there outside of some type of, you know, brief event. Now, she also, she has her, you know, two teenage kids, so she's got a lot coming and going that is not the, there for the inn. But as far as guests for the inn, that's all, you know, she has never, and I'm not aware of any evidence of exceeding five rooms or exceeding the, the capacity that's in her license and somewhat reflected in a special permit. Again, we received that letter, the first letter late April, I think it's dated the 23rd. We immediately engaged with different elements in the town, and she made an adjustment to her website page that though it still lists, again, she has more than five rooms, people sometimes want double beds, sometimes king-size beds, sometimes whatever, so, but she put a note on, on the, the page which lists the rooms, that only five rooms are available at a time. And again, she's never rented more than five rooms, so, but that was what she thought was initially a reasonable step towards acknowledging and complying.
When, when did she do that?
That was May 1st. And I have, I have a, I have some photocopies of the screenshot of that that happened. We then became concerned that, hey, that wasn't enough, so she took down some, you know, rooms, so that only showed five, thinking, okay, even though she, you know, the house has more than five rooms, and that might mean that she's missing what some people want in their accommodations, but she's like, you know, again, the goal was to, you know, the letter was clear, we wanted to respond to it timely in a real way, so that was the next thing we did, was, okay, this reflected only five rooms on the website, and let's take down, so there's only five rooms shown to be rent, even though, again, she has six. And again, the word cottage is still there, but cottage is not referring to the room out back.
Let me ask a question. Why would she have six rooms up on her website if she, her license is for five? I'm confused.
Well, she has that many rooms. Some of them have queen-size beds, some have king-size beds, so it depends on what the customers want. If a customer's looking for a king-size bed, for example, and she happens to take down, you know, she has one there, but the five she's listing are, are queen-size, someone, maybe she rents one of the king-size.
It's confusing advertising.
I'm not, I'm not, no.
No.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that. I'm not disputing that it can get better.
I'm just asking for clarification.
Yeah, I understand. So, my intent here is to be direct, to be, to own all we can in an issue, and again, to hear you and comply.
Questions from the board? Mr. Zalinski, we'll start with you.
Yes, sir. As far as you're aware, how long has this issue been going on with the town?
When you say this issue?
Issue we're speaking about, the added number of rooms to what, in direct, the direct opposite of what the permit says. The permit says five.
Well, she's never rented more than five. She's been, we've been-
Hold on one second. Let me start over. I'll start with my second question first. The number of beds doesn't constitute the number of rooms. So, as far as I'm concerned, the six that you described doesn't, didn't answer the chair's question, all right? Just because you have more beds doesn't change your permit to rooms. You follow me? Unless you can straighten me out on that.
No, well, that's not why I'm here. I'm not here to-
I'm just asking a question so I can check a box.
Yeah, I got you. The bylaws talk about guest units, you know, when we, then when we shift to the, we move to the license, it talks about rooms. So, I've done a bit of looking, I'm sure there's smarter people than me out there who know, but what's the rooms, the guest rooms, the guest units? We don't know. What we tried to say is that the message seems to be clear, I, we thought was it's five rentals, you know, you're renting to five, and the capacity gives you another guideline. The capacity says, you know, each, it says rooms, it says two adults up to two kids per room. That's the guidance she has, right? Even that language in the license is a little bit different than a special permit, which initially was up to 20, but the license seems to be saying, this is what we need. So, when we looked at, when we looked at it, that's the answer we came up with, is that, well, even though she has more guest units or rooms available, she's never rented more than five. It's not her intent to rent more than five. She wants to comply. She has advertised more than five. I'm not trying to say that that's not the case, but in that advertising, the outcome has never led to renting more than five, so-
But you realize advertising more than what your permit holds, it puts you in violation as well?
I understand, yes. And she doesn't want to do that, okay? So, she, she removed, the first thing we did was we added, won't rent more than five, then we, she removed rooms down to five. So, she's, she's hearing you, her intent is that she's, she wants to be getting the message, and she wants to keep, you know, she wants to keep operating, it's her livelihood, you know, she wants to keep operating in that. So, she's, the intent here is very much to, again, listen, have a shared understanding, and comply. That's what we want to do.
Question?
No, then we'll go back to my other one. Is, for the record, when did this, when did you start receiving complaints and start this process, to your knowledge? When was the first time you got a complaint from the town that you were misrepresenting by accident?
I think when we applied for the special, that I know of, you're asking me that I know of, well, I became involved in this aspect, this issue, when she was, she had applied to modify the special permit to increase the size of-
Please, just give me a date, sir, I don't mean to be-
No, it's okay. I think it was like-
I'm looking for a timeline, that's all.
I think it was 2023 is when she applied for that, sometime in 2023, might have been early 2023, and she was seeking to increase it, there was, it wasn't well-received, okay? And she ended up withdrawing the application. Now, she has ongoing litigation with both of Butters about property line dispute that-
That we can't talk about, yeah.
We can't, I know, but there's, I'm just here to say that.
I appreciate it. That's, that's all I have. Madam Chair, I may have some reserved questions after we take, we public comment on this. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Mr. Muscally?
So, is it, is it your contention that this cottage is part of the main house?
Well, it's my concern-
Because the permit says only in the main house.
Correct. My concern, and I want-
Not your concern, but what-
My concern is that the word, she was using the word cottage for part of the main house, when the word cottage in the assessors map and the assessors information means this shack shed out back. So, when you look at what the main house is, the, what she's calling the cottage on the assessors map has been calling, is included in the number of rooms and number of bathrooms assigned to the main house. That's what it's-
Is it part of the main house?
Part of the house.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yes, sir.
Physically.
Physically, part of the main house. Actually, she, part of the, working with the town back in, it took her a number of years because of some water mitigation issues, but she had to actually connect these two, these two things that she built. There was the original structure that she built in addition to it, she had to make sure they were connected, but all of that, all of the beds shown, all of the bathrooms shown in the assessors information, seven beds, six bathrooms, are included in the main house. Not the, what I think has been called a cottage out back. So she was like, you know, the legal term for it, she was like, shucks, I called this the wrong thing, and it's causing part of this problem.
I have a question.
Mr. Brown?
So where do the residents live opposed to the rooms that are rented? Is there another building yet?
No, there is, they're in the main house, and essentially, depending on what the needs of, the space needs of, are people coming in, is where they, they are, they move, especially in the season, they move where those people aren't.
I see.
Any other questions from the board?
I don't want to stop any, I would be interested in feedback from staff as to what the interpretation of what the violation is.
Town Council?
Sure, I'd like to show you a visual, if I could.
That would be great.
Because I think we're talking about buildings and what is and what is not the main house, and what is and what is not the cottage. Do you want this so I don't cheat? Okay. Who's talking? So, what I'm hoping to show you here, there, how am I getting into the GIS stuff?
Top right benchmark on the toolbar there?
There it is. Thank you. So this is the property, and if I go to-
Themes.
Themes, and then I go to satellite, I'm gonna go to the aerial imagery here, so here's what we have here. And I'm just gonna point this out. So what we're talking about here is, this is the cottage. In 2004, that was the, the living quarters, and here, that was depicted as garage. So the special, the original special permit talks about the property being occupied by one, one livable structure and the garage. And what the 2004 special permit did is it allowed for the inn to be built. The inn is this structure here, it's built in front of the cottage. This is the main house. So you have here a main house, which is the inn. Thank you.
Turn it on.
I'll just talk a lot louder, or do you want me to come up here?
Yeah, that's better.
That's better.
So, you've got the inn that was built pursuant to the 2004 special permit, and that's the, the building that, that is on the roadway. Behind it was the original structure, which is now called the cottage. It is a fully separate structure, and then in the back is a garage, which was then in 2016, in accordance with a modification of the special permit, turned into a gift shop in which the license holder is allowed to sell prepackaged ice cream now, and that's it. So here, what's happening, and I think where there's been some confusion, is that when the lodging house license was issued by the Select Board in 2016, the application was for five rooms in the main house. Again, that's the one closest to the street, and two rooms in the cottage. There's never been some sort of confusion about which is which. There's the main house, and then there's the cottage, and they are two separate buildings. That was rejected by the Select Board. The Select Board said no to the two rooms in the cottage and allowed the five rooms in the main house. Since then, every license since has said that the license holder can operate a lodging house with five rooms only in the main house. There is no confusion. Here, it's very important that for a lodging house license, there are two things that have to be presented and considered to the Select Board upon an application or a renewal. It's the license, it's the property, and then there has to be a description of where on the property and what we're talking about, where the lodging is gonna take place, what rooms are gonna be rented. Here, there has never been any confusion from the town about what is to be rented. It has been since 2016 and is still maintained today, that it's five rooms only in the main house. There is no sort of, let's put them where they fit, or maybe if someone doesn't necessarily want to be in the main house, it's okay to put them in the room in the cottage. That is not okay. That is not what the license says. Putting renters in the cottage is a violation of the license.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Zalinski.
More, is, is, they have separate utilities, right?
I don't know anything about the utilities.
And they're connected by just close and breeze, where it looks like?
Yeah.
Okay.
And when was that connection? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on, Mr. Muscally, wait.
I'm sorry, I'm all sorry, thank you.
Go ahead.
And, and when was that? Do we have records as to when that was, that connection was, was made?
I don't know when the connection was made, the construction happened some-
Between the main and the, what we're calling cottage.
Sometime after the 2004 special permit, before the lodging house license. I, you know what, I can see here. So, so after 2004, this shows the inn being built, the, the front house being built as of 2005, but I did look at the 2001 aerial image before, and the house is not there in 2001. So I don't know why that's not showing up.
And it's not relevant that there's something that connects the two buildings?
It's really not.
Correct?
She was, she was actually instructed by the town to build it and to connect the two. If you look at the planning board, I have a copy of the planning board information from two, the site plan review from 2004, it's called- I have a copy of the planning board information from two, the site plan review from 2004, it's called, it's called the main structure and the addition. And they're they're supposed to be, it was one building. If you look at the town assessors information today, the number of bedrooms and the number of bathrooms counts both structures. So I'm calling them two, but it's one. So these two buildings here, the town assessors has them all. When you look at for cottage, it's talking about this structure, okay, and it has the two, the two, um, patios on each side. But all the information is there. She wasn't going to connect them, actually, the way that the engineering worked out, but the town was adamant, so she did.
Not true.
Go ahead.
So where does the six bedroom come in? Where where would you find the six bedroom in those that's been advertised?
Well, there's there's five in this structure, correct? Five in that structure, and then the other one is here.
So how many people live in that house?
Right now, three.
So how many bedrooms do they occupy?
They have her mother that visits on occasion.
How many bedrooms do they occupy, the the residents?
They're in two or three. I'm sorry, maybe I didn't hear your question. Can I ask that again?
You advertise six ba, six bedrooms for rent.
Mm-hmm.
Where do those people stay if they fill that up, even though you're only permitted for five? But say there were six, where would they stay?
Well, there's not, there's not six, so I.
But you advertise for six.
Yeah, but they don't rent six. So I don't, so I.
Thank you. I'm good.
I think the testimony earlier was that they move around to accommodate guests and switch rooms.
We also had testimony from our town council that it specified in their special permit that it's it's not to be that way.
It's, I have a copy of the special permit here. It doesn't say that.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm looking at the license.
The license says main house.
The license was issued April 22nd, 2024.
Yes.
And it's very clear, maximum five rooms only in the main house.
Correct.
Maximum of lodgers, 18 persons, two adults, two children, under the age of 12, only per room.
Correct.
Questions from the board? I'm going to go to Ms. Goldstone first.
Do we have any of the the historical basis for that stipulation that it was five rooms only, main house, in in establishing the the permit?
The license.
It's on the license.
Sorry, the license.
Established for the license. I'm sorry, what kind of document? I have the minutes from the 2016 meeting. Would you like to see those?
Sure.
I had I had asked about that, actually, last week, that, you know, as part of my gain to try to understand the different scenarios and concerns here, you know, what 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 led to that? And is there, you know, how, is that something that can we, we can work around or work with? Again, the goal here for Ms. Ms. Robinson and her family is to is to comply. Thank you.
So if you. Sorry, I'll go up there. So if you look on the second page. Summary of action, license application, number one. Application for new lodging house license, Frederick William House. The house will have five rooms, the cottage too. However, the the Board of Selectmen, select board now, noted no other documents talked about the cottage. So the cottage was not included in the application. They will be serving prepackaged continental breakfast at this time. What that says to me is that the, and this is bolstered by the actual application, which I can submit to as well. There was always a desire to have two rooms in the cottage, but there was never any evidence presented to the select board so that they could consider it. And without information about where and how strangers are going to be renting rooms in an apartment, in a, in a commercial accommodation, this is a public safety matter. Without any information from the Board of, for this board, about what those two rooms were going to be about, the select board decided to say no. And it's been that way ever since.
Thank you. Mr. Muscally?
Attorney Cook, I'm I'm a little confused about the application that your client made and withdrew. What was it that your client was seeking in that application?
She was seeking in that application to add the this small room in the back as a guest unit. But there's, there's a number of issues. One of the things that was required, of course, for the application was to survey the property. And in doing that, we learned of survey errors that were done some years ago that impacted both of Butters, which put in play a number of issues that made that just not the right time to do that. So we withdrew that application and trying, still trying to sort sort those things out. So that's why that didn't go forward.
I'm sure.
Uh, go ahead. I'll go to Mr. Renshaw and then Ms. Goldstone.
I have a comment, and I think it's timely as part of this.
Yes.
Section of the discussion. I I do, I had a conversation with the building commissioner, trying to get an understanding of how we arrived at the five rooms. And that five-room determination, according to the building commissioner, is limit, is is defined by the size, the square footage of the parcel itself. So that's a very strict box to operate within. And I don't know the exact dimensions of this parcel, but I want the board to know that that number five was based on the size of the parcel.
What I can share with you about that is that it's 20, for 20,000 square feet, you could have the five commercial accommodations. There, for every 4,000 square feet beyond that, you can seek to add another one. At the time of the initial application, based on the survey then, it was believed that the parcel was just over 25,000 square feet. Now, as there's different, there's different issues with it, but we don't believe that it's 24,000 square feet unless some other issues come into play. So somewhere between 23 and change and 24 and change, depending on who you ask and when. So that's how, so five is the number that it would be right now, which I I just had to to show some context to what you and the building commissioner were saying.
Ms. Goldstone, go ahead.
Clarifying question. So were you saying that the the application that was placed and then revoked was for two rooms in what is now the ice cream?
For one room.
So it was an application for two rooms, one of which would have been in what is now the ice cream?
It was an application for one room and what was in that, in this structure.
Yes.
I thought you had said two.
I thought you had said two as well.
If I did, I misspoke. I I believe that when two was spoken of, it was by counsel referring to this structure.
Go ahead. Mr. Zalinski?
I have a question for for our town council, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
Maura, could you clarify this for me?
I hope so.
Under summary of actions, right, number one, licenses. The house will have five rooms, the cottage two. However, Board of Selectmen noted no other documents talked about the cottage, so the cottage was not included in the application. They will be serving prepackaged continental breakfast at this time. So that that substantiates what you just, what you just explained to us previously, correct?
That's, yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you. Thank you, manager.
Go ahead, Mr. Muscally.
I don't know if you can answer this, Mike, or Peter, or Maura, but if 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 an application was submitted that limited to five rooms and included the cottage, would that be a violation of the current zoning? Or if a, what I'm saying is if a proper application were made at some point in the future, is there something that prevents rooms being in the cottage under our zoning code?
I can answer that. So it would require a modification of the special permit again.
Right.
That has been stymied because of the ongoing litigation with the owner and neighbors on both sides. It's a, it's a boundary dispute, which is a hurdle for the ZBA in making a determination about a special unit, unit, a special permit, because if they can't, if they don't know where the boundaries actually are, you can't calculate lot size.
And and the number of, it would be, but but if, but if the application was limited to five, those being in the cottage, would that necessarily be a bar?
So what they're, what they're doing right now isn't, it is feasible, but not with the documentation that they have.
Understood.
Yeah, so I'm just making sure it, at some point, that could be accomplished. It would require an amendment of this license, because it only require, it only allows five in the main house, and an amendment of the special permit, because the special permit also says only five rooms. So it's, it could be.
That that's, that was my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we've been actually working on getting a modification, an application or modification submitted, application for a modification submitted. The question has been acknowledging the boundary issues that are there. However, we only, whether they, you know, whether they fall here or there, we only need 20,000, the client only needs 20,000 for the five accommodations. So can we move by that now, or do they want us to still wait until that's over? So I'm, my intent here has been to answer all your questions as honestly, directly as I can. I know sometimes you'll agree with the things I'm saying, and sometimes you won't. But what I want to recur through everything I say here is that this is a small business operator. She she want, she's listening, she wants to comply, she wants to keep operating. It's it's her family income. It's all that they have and all that they do. If there's action to be taken, just she, she will comply with that, of course. Also, she's concerned about people coming and visiting, and how can she accommodate them so that they're not turned off from her business and her, you know, and also from visiting the town and whatnot. But she 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 gets what we're saying here. She wants to take the proper steps. She's, when she can, she'll seek the modification to see if it's possible, what was described. But but she hears you and she she wants to comply. If what she's done to date is not enough, she's, she'll come up with ideas of her own, she'll listen, she'll do more. But but that's the, that's the overriding message that I want to convey, even though I realize sometimes when I'm answering your questions, I'm saying things you want to hear, not if you want to hear, but I'm trying to be truthful the whole time.
Mr. Muscally, because I need to let the public speak to this. Go ahead.
I guess one question, we'll we'll make a decision. But is it, would it be your client's understanding going forward that compliance would mean no rooms in that cottage?
Yes, until the, until the special permit.
Until some other action might be taken.
And 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 that's not.
That would be clear. I mean, that's.
Guaranteed. Yeah, she understands that she had to seek permission to do that.
She has a license for five rooms valid through April 30th, 2025.
Yes.
And that's what she'd have to comply with. Any other questions from the board?
In the main house?
Yeah, only in the main house.
Not in that, whatever we call it.
It doesn't matter. It's the, the license says only in the main house for five rooms. Any other?
He's making the argument that the main house includes what we're talking about, the cottage. I want to clarify.
That it's the main building.
It's the the main building.
The building forward of the Breeze Way.
Right.
Yes, the one closest to the street, which our town council has said repeatedly. Any other questions from the board?
No.
We hear you on that and would comply.
Okay, I need to open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here to speak on this application? Yes, sir. And you understand fully what is in front of this board? Am I correct? Thank you.
What?
Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Jonathan Stronik. I live at 600 Palmer Ave, which directly abuts the subject property. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly share my comments. I believe are relevant to the topic at hand regarding a matter that's very important to me. I promise I only need three minutes of your time. I'm a nervous speaker, but I will keep it under three minutes, I promise. My concern is the lengthy history of this particular compliance issue, that despite best efforts from various town employees, appears to be ongoing. Document one, the packet my wife handed out, is an enforcement letter from Building Commissioner Lady O'Gore dated May 2007, specifically making the property owner aware of the issues related to renting the cottage. Document two is a response to that letter, where through counsel, the property owner appears to acknowledge the usage is not in compliance with the special permit. Document three is an email dated October 22nd, 2014, from zoning admin Sarri Budro, where she raised the issue of rentable rooms again with the property owner after reviewing the bed and breakfast website, which listed the cottage, as she states that, I thought you were living in the rear of the house, and it appears you're renting. Despite the previous notices, document four is an application for a lodging license in 2006, 2016, which indicates five bedrooms in the main house and two in the cottage. Based in part by a referral from the zoning board, the select board issued a lodging license on August 29th, 2016, which specifically states, main house only, parentheses, five rooms. Document five is that referral. Document six is an admin approval. The application for it included many pages about how the business is run, but the actual request is to sell packaged ice cream. The, that was accepted by the zoning board, but it was specifically written that there should be no other changes to the special permit, except the sale of prepackaged ice cream. So therefore, I believe is not relevant today. Document seven is an excerpt from the zoning board of appeals hearing on April 13th, 2023. At that ZBA hearing, the applicant was looking to convert the gift shop into an additional accommodation. Mr. Peterson of the zoning board asked, you currently have seven bedrooms, and this would be eight. Attorney Patrick Cook responded, yes. At the suggestion of the zoning board, the application was withdrawn, and they recommended furthermore that the applicant addressed the concerns outlined during the hearing regarding performance standards and compliance. On August 29th, Building Commissioner Gary Street wrote a cease and desist letter. That was, that action was appealed and then withdrawn. I would add that the building commissioner also wrote a separate and different notice of violation letter regarding the site plan, which to my knowledge has still not been resolved. Considering that the original license is based in part on a referral from the ZBA, that the inn be designed and operated in accordance with the special permit, I believe the second notice of violation regarding the site plan is also relevant to tonight's topic. Following a warning letter from the, from the town, advertising and active renting of the cottage continued, which prompted prompted notice of tonight's hearing. Since notice of the hearing, there have been some changes to the website, as mentioned, but tonight, there is still a blurb at the top, advertising the cottage as a rental and providing a number to call to make bookings. In addition to booking by phone, I do not know what other affiliated sites have the booking available, such as VRBO, Booking.com, Airbnb. In fact, as I was waiting for this hearing, the mobile version of the Frederick Williams House website is different than the desktop version. If you were to use your phone to go to the site today, there is still an active link for the cottage with dates that you can select to rent it. I happen to see multiple people here tonight look, and I'm sure they can confirm the same. It is still on their phone on that website where you can book the cottage. Throughout this entire timeline, nothing has changed. My wife and I, it is not in our nature to rant and yell, but we are admittedly frustrated. When my wife and I purchased our home in 2021, we made an investment in the town of Falmouth. Despite a very difficult last two years, we have no intention of leaving our home and intend to raise our family here. I do not know the full extent of powers and options the board has, but what we are looking for is assurance that where past efforts have failed to yield results, your action tonight leads to meaningful change, so we need, do not need to come back and have the same discussions for years to come. Thank you. And if there's any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Anyone else here to comment on this application? Yes, sir.
My name is Gerald Boyzen. I own 582 Palmer Avenue, which is next to Jeanette. We're still in legal litigation on the property lines. They're trying to grab some of my land by adverse possession. So, and I'm getting sick of picking trash up over there. That's all I got to say.
Any other comment? Okay, seeing none, I would enter.
Hello, I'm Fiona Marquess. I am Jeanette Robinson's daughter, the owner of Frederick William House, and I'd just like to talk about the business as a whole and how this decision-making process is going to affect us if you decide to suspend the license for 30 days. Not only are you suspending our license in the beginning of the summer season, which is, as we all know, Falmouth is a summer place to be, it is our income. It is the way we survive. It is what supports me throughout college and what supports my mother and my brother, who's only 14 years old. And just overall, I've seen how this entire process, not only with this, but also the litigation, has affected my mother. but also the litigation, has affected my mother and my family. So I hope that you think about the way you're deciding tonight and how this will affect us. Because sitting here is the first time I've actually been able to be in a town hall meeting. And I want you to know that this decision is extremely important. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board.
Can we add language to more clearly define that the main house means the front building to the street side of the breezeway?
So you, you can, the answer is you can. You'd have to have a, a separate hearing to do that. In order to modify any, any license like this, you'd have to open a hearing for that purpose. And just like you would with an alcohol license if you're going to modify it. So yes, but not tonight.
But it's not for tonight. So we need to think about whether the license holder has violated the terms of the license by renting rooms outside of the main house. That's what's in front of us. We have to determine if based upon credible evidence, it is more likely than not that Ms. Robinson is renting rooms that are not located within that main house, which is in violation of the license. So we need to decide whether there's credible evidence to, to support this. And then once we do that, we move forward into the next phase. But what do people think?
Well.
Want me to go first?
Yeah, go ahead, just go ahead.
You want to go?
Um, while, while it's a very sensitive subject, all people that rent rooms and have businesses do that for their income and their well-being. I tried to get with their attorney, I tried to get some kind of timeline. This isn't something that's happened overnight. This has happened repetitively. And there's a track record of this happening. And while this is one business, there are a lot of businesses in this town that, that do play by the rules, that do advertise correctly. And they do abide by the licenses issued by them. There have been before plenty of boards. We've, we've heard the, the abutters concerns prior to this, and it still continues. So at some point, while I feel for the applicant and their family, I mean, it would be my, it would be my, I, I would move to support the town manager's recommendation. And that's not a motion yet. It's, it's where I'm headed after some more discussion.
So you see the evidence as credible that she's.
I absolutely do. And, and not to mention, we can't get into the legalities of it. But if that square footage of that, of, of that comes back after adjudication or litigation, it may change the whole scope of that special permit by waives lot coverage. We don't even know that yet.
I, I would.
Mr. Muscally?
I would agree with Mr. Zelinski that I think there's credible evidence that at least, at least starting in October of 2023, when Mr. Street notified the applicant that, that she was violating the, 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 the terms. I think, I think there's credible evidence that she went forward nonetheless. So on that point, I would, I would support a finding that, that there was a violation.
Ms. Goldstone?
I have another question potentially for our town council. Does that help? One of the arguments that has been made hinges on the difference between offering a number of rooms and actively renting a number of rooms. In legal term, the, the permit is, whi- which one, which one is the, which one does the permit allow? Is it the number of rooms that are occupied by renters? Or it is the number of rooms advertised and offered for rent?
So the, the license allows for five rooms to be rented at any one time and has a mac- maximum occupancy. And it also has a limitation on where those rooms are. It's this last point that is the biggest bone of contention. The, and the law on this is clear in chapter 140. The licensed premises is clearly defined. And anything that is being rented that is not defined in the license is not subject to the license. It's not properly licensed. And so it's not allowed to be rented.
To that point, I mean, I don't think we have credible evidence that the applicant at any time necessarily, at any one point, rented more than five rooms at any one, at, at any time. I don't think that, that's really before us. Counsel has stated that, that his, his, his belief is that she has not. But I don't think we have any evidence to support it one way or the other. I think the issue is clearly, as Mora just said forth, that, that second piece, which is where those rooms were permitted in any event. And I do think, as I said before, there's credible evidence to, to support that finding.
So even though we've had these letters and so forth, this, I believe, is the first time this has come before the board as a violation. Is that correct?
It is. And it's really because there's, the energy has been put towards trying to get compliance through zoning, because that's the first line of attack. Um, it's, uh, I, I only ever recommend coming to a select board with a license violation as a last resort. Because this is, it's, it's the hammer that's coming down. The zoning, zoning compliance can take a lot longer. And it, it's more complicated. This is really straightforward. And a hearing in public is supposed to carry some weight. Um, it's usually a lot easier to get compliance when you have a public hearing and you start talking about all of the violations in public. That's, that's why we're here, because we've tried everything else.
So the town has tried everything else. We're just the last section of the town to say, to, to do something.
Okay.
Ms. Goldstone?
So we've, we've heard differing interpretations this evening of main house. Is there a point in this timeline and these documents where it has been made explicitly clear to the business owner that the town means only in the section forward of the breezeway?
Repeatedly. And I don't find it credible that that's not clear.
So we would just be taking a, a position right now on whether or not there's evidence to support a finding that there has been a violation?
Well, if we.
And then we would go to the next step.
Tonight is.
To decide if there.
If we determine that, that a violation of the license has occurred, then we need to decide what we need to do about that. So it, it appears to me that we're in agreement that there is a violation, that there is credible evidence to support a violation. Am I correct?
I would support that.
Okay. Ms. Goldstone?
I think so. Certainly those rooms have been offered. I, I don't know what the, uh, track record of whether those rooms have, those rooms have been rented. But we've heard that people have moved around to accommodate. So I think probably yes.
Mr. Brown?
It seems there is. I would say though, it's not 100% clear if it's a willful intentional violation, but.
That may go to the, I mean, I don't want to stop you, but that may go to the, the second decision that we have to make tonight. I mean, so, but.
But it's very clear. It's very clear on the license, only in the main house. So I, it's hard for me to see that, that just because somebody wants a king-sized bed, they can go in the cottage. That's not what the license says. The license says five rooms only in the main house. And I, I agree with Attorney O'Keefe that it, it's been repeatedly made clear that what the main house is.
And, and it, I mean, it says main house only. So I mean, that's more emphatic as to what the intention of, of, of the permit, what's covered by the permit, I, I think is.
We need to have a discussion up here, please.
Yep. I find the use of the term only being even more supportive of.
Even if, even if the, the, even if it was ambiguous how it was described, but it's, it's there in the documents in multiple that overlap. You know, what they, what the, what the purpose of the, the license was and how it was written.
And it sounds like other boards have made it very, very clear.
And this additional paperwork is also indicative of that.
Yes. So if we have found that there is credible evidence, we need to decide how we move, move forward.
Do we take a vote on, on this first?
We can take a vote on the credible evidence.
To the next step.
Yes, if, if you'd like to vote it, sure.
I'll make a motion that the board find that the owners of 594 Palmer Ave. Have violated the terms of the license that was issued effective May 1, 2024.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have determined that there is credible evidence. We determined there's a violation of the license. And now we need to see, we need to discuss how we proceed from here.
Can I ask counsel, what are the range of options we have? Fines?
It's in the memo?
Well, no, I.
It's in the memo. Suspend the license for an appropriate amount of time. Revote the license. Issue a warning. Take no action.
So, so my question is, is, are those the only options that we have? Or is the board, is the board able to fashion some other type of?
No, you can, I, it's not in the memo, but you can issue a fine of $500 as well under, under chapter 140.
Okay, so, so they're monetary fine, but it would be limited to $500? But per current, no, I mean, just in total, $500?
Just in total. And then just to clarify further in a little bit more detail, if, if the board wants to revoke the license, they would need to make a determination that the licensee is unfit to hold the license. If the board wants to suspend the license, it can determine an appropriate amount of time at, at the board's discretion. And upon a finding of any, any cause deemed satisfactory to you. So for any reason, you can also suspend the license for a time that you determine. Lastly, you could issue a warning or take no action. There's no, there's no standard in the law for that.
And we do have a recommendation, I believe, from our town manager. Motion to suspend the lodging license issued to the Frederick William House for 30 days. That is the recommendation out of the corner office.
Can, can it be a combination of two of these?
In what sense?
Your warning with a revocation as second of, well, this is now more than a second offense, but.
Well, it's actually technically first really for us, right?
So a conditional warning? A warning and then if there's a finding that there's a, a subsequent violation, then the license would automatically be revoked?
For a year.
Yes.
I mean, that certainly send, it, it certainly keeps them in the game, making their money. And, and that's just a suggestion. I, my first, my first inclination is to go with the town manager's recommendation. I was just asking if there was a, if there was a way to combine.
Mine as well.
I just.
My own, my, my own view would be some con, it's some combination to make it clear to the applicant that we believe that she had violated the, the terms of the, of the license. I would look to maybe a monetary fine of $500 and a suspension possibly of less than 30 days, which might bring the, the owner able to start around the 4th of July, which I'm sure is, is, is an important time for her. So maybe a suspension of less than 30 days with a monetary fine would be something that I would like the board to consider.
Madam Chair, I would, I would, while I tend to half-heartedly agree with that premise, it, it sends a bad message to everyone else out there that are operating under licenses as well. That, that, you'll get it, you'll get a slap on the wrist the first time you do it. And if we stretch it out for a year and by the time it's resolved, summer's over and we've. See, I, I just don't, I, you can't have it both ways. And that's what I'm struggling with right now.
And I'm, I'm troubled with the history, okay? And I, I want to go back to something Attorney O'Keefe said. We, we're sort of the last rung. Our boards have dealt with this, managed this, tried to get compliance and have failed to do so. So it is, it is up to us to, to be strong enough and clear enough to, um, it puts something forward that says, no, we're just not going to tolerate this anymore.
I mean, does anyone on this board think that the, that the owner hasn't heard how we feel about this going forward? And that if there is any rental of any rooms in that cottage, which we can certainly see through various means, that we wouldn't take any further and, and more substantial action against her? I mean, I think.
Maybe, but that time will tell.
The town has.
Other boards, it hasn't happened. And that's my concern. It's the, it's the history part. I just, I.
Madam Chair.
And only time is going to tell. I, I can't predict that. I would hope so, but it, it hasn't come across with other boards. Let me go to Ms. Goldstone, I'll come back to you.
In terms of that history and us being the last resort, what I have, what I haven't seen, so I guess my question is, have any of those other steps involved any punitive measures? Was there any enforcement power with those that, that, that would have any of the similar impacts of what we're discussing here in terms of financial losses or revocation of the?
So the, the zoning enforcement was curtailed because of the extensive litigation. There's, I think there's three active lawsuits about the border disputes and some, some several tort claims involving both neighbors on, on either side. So I, uh, it was on my recommendation actually that we, we curtailed the zoning enforcement because there's no way for them to comply through the zoning issue. There, um, it was possible to seek fines. The goal is always compliance, always in any, any kind of code enforcement or any kind of license enforcement. Um, that has been, it hasn't been forthcoming here. Um, I, I, I think where that the zoning enforcement was headed was to court. And that's something that we haven't talked about here. Um, there's also a provision in chapter 140 and section about lodging houses that talks about injunctive relief. You could also, as part of your relief or part of your penalty, order before it happens, you could give me permission now to go to court instead of having me have to come back and ask you for permission to come, to go to court so that I could, if I found, if there was a violation, I could immediately go get an injunction. Um, it would save a couple of weeks. It's another tool in your toolbox. Um, so I think I tried to answer your question and then gave you a little bit more information than you asked for, but.
Mr. Brown?
And then.
So this would be my first time with a lodging house license violation. We've had liquor license violations. And I think each time we have one of those, it's always been a warning. So I don't know that this is really a different scenario. It's the first time coming to us. And I agree that there's a long history and I was surprised to see what we received from the neighbors because it's more than I had seen in my own research. But I don't remember the last time we did a, an actual penalty or actual, you know, something that's going to cost money, but.
Did the warnings work?
The, exactly.
I don't know. May I read this?
Go ahead.
With the liquor license.
During the April 22nd meeting, the chair commented that the select board office had received complaints that more than five rooms were being rented and that the continued, the continued violations of the license would result in a hearing before the select board to consider whether there were violations of the license and possible suspension or revocation of the license back in April. They were unnoticed, Mr. Muscally, back in April.
You're right.
As, as to the number of rooms, not necessarily the issue with respect to.
Mixing and matching.
Mixing and.
So we've already voted that they're in violation?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just pointing it out. And, you know, to your point, Mr. Zelinski, and it's, and it's a good point. I mean, certainly we don't want licensees to think that, that they can violate without any consequence. But I think a suspension of some period of time and a monetary fine is much more than a slap on the wrist. And I do think there are some mitigating circumstances that, you know, that, that are present. That is why I feel a suspension in the neighborhood of two weeks and a monetary fine would. fine would send the right message, certainly put the owner on notice that any violation going forward, and we have counsel's assurance that, that there would be nothing going on in the, in the main room, uh, main, nothing going on in the cottage, and, and allow the licensee to take advantage of, of the prime season, which would start around July 1st. That's, that's my feeling.
I don't think two weeks is enough.
So is that a mo, mad, are you, are you, are you making a motion?
I just responded to Mr. Muscally's.
I'll, I'll get it out there. I'm going to make a motion that, based upon our filing of, finding of a violation, that, that the, the decision of the, of the select board is to impose a suspension of 14 days of the current license and a monetary fine of $500 with a, with a statement that any violation of, of the terms of the license going forward would, would issue, would cause town council to be empowered to seek immediate injunctive relief.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Go ahead.
One last question for counsel, which is what, how is that compliance determined? Is that based on the, the website? What's the, what's the determination of, of compliance?
We, the evidence that we've had has, has been based on, based on complaints. It's complaint-driven. We have also been keeping an eye on advertising. The part of the warning that was issued in April was that advertising would be considered evidence of a violation of the license. So I, I would hope that that would continue, that continued advertising would be a continued violation, and that if we receive any other complaints with personal observation about the cottage being rented, that that would serve as evidence as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Muscally, aye.
Brown, aye.
Zelinski, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Taylor, no.
Zelinski, no.
Goldstone, aye.
Okay, so two-week suspension with a $500 fine. Okay, we'll move on. Discuss and vote on site recommendation for the future all-inclusive playground. Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and select board. As Peter walks his way, Peter McConerty, our public works director, works his way up to the podium. Want to thank the members of the working group that I, I actually created following select board's September 11th, 2023 meeting. If you all recall, I made the suggestion that we form a working group to look at all of the town, town-owned parcels in our inventory. Town Planner's been working for several months on just that, kind of that evaluation, the deep-level analysis and evaluation of all town-owned parcels. We leveraged Town Planner's information. It's part of this working group. The working group, as is indicated in your packet, met three times. The first one was February 8th, and the final meeting was on May 23rd. Had great discussions, and again, I want to thank the members of the, of the work group and the participation in hanging with the process. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Peter, and then we're going to kind of tag-team a little bit of the discussion. Peter?
I'm going to hold you to the 10 minutes. We are way behind.
Yes, Peter McConerty, Director of Public Works, thank you for having us. As the town manager had mentioned, the working group were together several times to discuss the, the location for the all-inclusive playground. Also, I had some meetings with the police chief, been very helpful with obviously congestion and transportation, and also a town council for future things that might come up, and I'm sure those, those meetings and conversations will continue. So we had three sites that we looked, that we looked at. Site number one, usually you go left to right and going right to left. Site number one is Davisville Road, is the, next to the Emerald House. Site number two is the Trotting Park Fields. Site number three is Goodwill Park. So when we put this working group together, the town manager, we, we went through national recommendations of how you would cite. This is not the first time this has been done. There's a lot of information out there to be able to take and go through.
Folks, let's kind of keep it down, please. We have a, a presentation here.
Being able to, being able to cite an all-inclusive playground. So there was eight key, eight key site components that were created. The first one was public transit access, and what distance from a proposed playground would public transit be? Pretty straightforward. Visibility from ra, from the roadway, that's pretty straightforward. Site topography would be, the site topography, if there's any, if there's any hills or if there's any low areas, that would have to take into consideration. Compatible adjacent uses, if there was, for instance, if there was schools, Goodwill Parks, there was ponds, and there was already playgrounds there. Construction readiness would be, going into construction, what is there that would have to go into work? Is there ledges, is there rock, is there, you would have to equal the site with the cuts and the fills. Existing infrastructure around the area, which would be schools, playgrounds, ponds, roadways, park areas. And oversight of existing maintenance schedule, that would be for our parks department. Our parks department takes care of the playgrounds. So what kind of work that would be for the parks department that's already overburdened at this time, and town taking care of the playgrounds? And ease of public access, that's pretty straightforward. So taking that and put it into a matrix, we put it in a matrix across the top, the, the eight areas, and then we chose 67 Davisville Road, Trotting Park, and Goodwill Park. And down the bottom had them, has them again, and there's a maximum score that can be taken out of this, is there was one point for each area, so it would be a maximum score of eight. So the first one, we looked at Davisville Road, public transit access would be from up at Davisville and 28, so we gave that a .5. Visibility from the street, it's right on the street, so we gave it a one. Site topography, it's pretty level. It drops off in the back. We gave that a one. Compatible uses, we gave that a one. There's a school there, and there's some other areas there. There's playgrounds there. Construction readiness, again, doing the cuts and fills. It's basically flat. There's not a lot of area with some, a lot of wooded area would need to be taken down. .5. Existing infrastructure, we gave a one. And then oversight and maintenance, we gave a .5. Parks department located at 416 Gifford Street would have to travel halfway across town with their crews to be able to maintain that site, so that got a .5. And then ease of public access, we gave that a one. It's right off the street. Trotting Park Road, this is a little different. The public transit access, there was zero, because there's not really a possi, possibility of having public transit. Visibility from the street is a zero. It's about 700 feet off of Gifford Street. The site topography was a .5 because it, it is level, but it drops off in the back. The construction readiness, we gave it, compatible uses, we gave it a one with the adjacent fields and the, the, the athletic fields. And the new area that we put in for the ADA area, the construction readiness, the same thing, would be doing the cuts and fills, the level of the site and to be able to fit that in. Existing infrastructure, we gave it a zero. There's nothing really in that area. The oversight, existing maintenance, it's right up the road from our shops, so we gave it a one. And the ease of public access, we gave it a .5 because it's so far off the road. So that got a four out of an eight. Goodwill Park, public transit we access, we gave it a .5. It could be manageable from down the street. There already is. The, the RTA goes in that area. Visibility from the street, you'd be looking at it from the Palmer Ave side. We gave it a one. Site topography, we gave it a one. It's pretty level. It'd be a little cuts and fills, but it's, it's good to work with right now. Compatible uses, you have trails, you have the pond, you have a existing playground there right now. You have bathrooms, you have two pavilions, and there's a lot of local areas that, close to the bike path. Construction readiness, cuts and fills, once again, would, we gave it a one. It would be able to be, during construction, it'd be able, the site would be able to be leveled, and trees would be able to, would be able to select the trees to be taken down. Existing infrastructure, we gave it a one. There's already an existing playground there. Oversight, existing maintenance, we gave it a one. In the summertime, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, our parks department is in that park every day anyways, all, every day, all week. So we gave that a one, so would just be, it would be some extra work on the playground, but they're already on the site anyways, and it's right adjacent to us. That was, that was a big, a big thing for our parks department. And then ease of public access, we gave from .5. There's two different ways to get into that park, but we gave it a .5, so that received a maximum seven out of an eight. So the, we continued to look at Goodwill Park, that it seemed to intrigue the working group. So the pros on it is the site can have a dedicated access of a Palmer Ave. The site already has bathrooms. The site already has two cupboard pavilions, but there's one cupboard pavilion where we're looking to put the expanded playground. There's a direct, direct access from the bike path with the Palmer Ave crossing that was put in last year. There's existing parking areas that can be expanded. Playground components can be spread out. There's a much larger area there, so there's more area for design that can be spread out on different parts of the, of the park. Adjacent walk-in paths, and Public Works Division already has dedicated staff, as I mentioned. The cons is the parking. As we all know, in the summertime, it does get congested up there. Congestion also, and park and playground access. We, we had a meeting with the police chief and the captains to talk about this. My, just, my comments on this is, is whether a all-inclusive playground be used at Goodwill Park or does not, is not be placed at Goodwill Park, this has to be addressed anyways. Over the years, we've had, we've always had parking and congestion and playground access, and I think there are options to the town that we can use to, to better be able to control that. So whether the playground goes in there or not, we still have to look at that. So we'll be doing future meetings and conversations with the police. So a little bit more of a blow-up on this, and this is only conceptual, just to show that the existing playground is in this area. There's an existing pavilion in this area. The existing bathrooms are right here. The, the Crab Apples is down here. There's an access in the middle of the park here, and we could add additional parking spaces along this area, so there was a lot of amenities that could be act, worked on in this area. And we could also isolate portions of the park to keep it away from other portions of the park if we needed to. So the group unanimously, unanimously chose site three as being the best location for the playground.
Peter, can I interrupt you for one minute?
Sure.
And just for reference, the, could you go back one slide? The, the red illustrations show the different elements of the previously kind of conceptual designs that, that the group a couple, three years ago had put together. We had a landscape architect kind of design this. So Peter's trying to superimpose, lay that on top of the existing site, and you'll see that for all three, just to show that the proposed elements, and those will be up for discussion and revision, but the proposed elements would all fit on this site.
So we, yeah, so we had elements on this area where the playground is, and we also were able to take the same elements and put them on the other side, just to show that there's plenty of area up there to be able to expand this and, and spread this, spread this out. It doesn't have to be contained in one small area. Just some, some additional pros is possible upgrades to the area. This is the parking area, and you can see in the back here, that's the existing pavilion that's already there. This would be the large, flat area that we'd be looking at expanding. This portion right, this port, this area right here is this area right here that we'd be looking at expanding. I'm going a little quick, but I, I know we wanted to, to move this forward. Coming in off of, off of Palmer Ave, this is looking towards Woods Hole. It's a little hard to see. There's a stake here that's about 12 feet off the roadway. The possibility of going to the state and asking, asking to work with the state, the possibility of putting a D cell lane in there, so you could have a queue lane of vehicles coming north to be off the road, but it'll be another, another lane to be able to pull in and to go up this middle area of this, of this driveway up to get up to the park. And this, I was standing right here. I took a photo this way. I just did a 90 and took a shot going up the driveway. The driveway could be expanded, but once again, it'd be an access in and out of the park. So it would be, it'd be pretty easy to access that park. There's a lot of advantages to that. Just additional, more area of the playground. This is the crossing at Palmer Ave that connects to the Shining Sea Bike Way. The lower left is, this is the existing playground that's right there, we, that's already there, that we'd be able to maybe do some little modifications for, but it's not that old. I think it was put in in 2016. And again, this, the pavilion area with the parking up over on this side. It has a lot of, has a lot of accents to this park that the group thought that would work out very well to be able to have the park work up there. Now, with this, of course, we've gone through a lot of information. This would be a, a progress, a work in progress. Everything that we're looking at, would have to work with the state, would be working with the police, would be working with town council to be able to fit this in and how it would fit in. This is conceptual. We'd be looking at getting a designer to come in here and fully do maybe a renting of the area. And, and, and that's where we left it. We thought that out of the three, the three sites, that Goodwill Park was the best site out of, out of the three of them. I'd take any questions if you, I went fast because I wanted to keep this quick, but we can answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. McConerty, so is the playground kind of near the end of its life, or is it-
Still in pretty good shape, the one that's there now.
The existing playground that's there right now was built in 2016, so it's new.
Is there any possibility that we could use the other area that's on the other side of the road here?
Yeah, so we would not be, what, I, I did some overlay in this area to be able to revamp some of those areas, but the intention is not to remove that existing playground. It's new. We'd be looking to build a side of it, onto the side of it, yeah, yeah. We're looking to just expand the size of the existing playground that's there. Would become, this fenced-in area is where you could, the playground is, would be coming on this side. You can come behind it. You can come over on this side. You can come over in this area, and we can come over on this area.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We thought it was a, we thought it was a complimentary use, being all-inclusive, to have the existing relatively young playground amenity there-
Right.
-for families to be able to have that ability to go walk across a pathway or the street, basically, to, to use both the, the standard playground assets as well as the, the new.
Any other questions? Mr. Muscally?
Are there any concerns about site distance pulling in from Palmer Ave, you going left, going right?
It's a little harder to see. I, I'm just, it's actually very hard to see, but coming in off of Palmer, Palmer Ave, there's three driveways. There's one driveway next to Crab Apples. There's one in the center of the, the park, and there's one also at the other end where that 10 Pump and Station Road is. The one closer to Crab Apples, there would be a site distance looking, coming from the south. The one on the north is too close to the highway, coming off the highway. You'd probably only, you'd have to restrict that to right-hand turns. So the, the way we're looking at it now is those two driveways would remain locked, and the one in the middle, you get between 300 to 400 feet of site distance on that roadway. And that roadway's 40 miles an hour, so 400, it's between 350 and 400 would be appropriate for the, for the site distance on that.
Would, would that flashing light have any, would that work into people, you know, cars driving out of there?
The flashing light would not. The flashing light will help bikers and pedestrians get in from the bike path. And just to, again, we're looking also at doing some more design on Catherine Lee Bates Road. So that flashing light that's at, at the, that's up there right now, they're looking at doing the exact same thing at Catherine Lee Bates Road that crosses Palmer Ave. So there'll be two of them.
Slow things down on, on, on that segment of it.
In that area, and if we were able to put in a D cell lane, you know, a couple hundred-foot D cell lane to get two or three vehicles about 25 feet, if you can put in a hundred-foot, you can get four to six cars being able to pull in and go up that and get them out of Palmer Ave. It could also slow traffic, which not, you don't want it to stop traffic, or because slow traffic might be a good thing on that roadway.
Any other questions?
I think it's a good idea.
It's a long time coming, and appreciate the work of the work group, and certainly Kathleen Haines. This has been a mission of hers for, for many years, and it's good to see maybe some positive movement on it.
And, and like I say, and I'll just reiterate, I, I know, you know, in the summertime, we do know, we know Goodwill Park. It needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed with- It needs to be addressed, it needs to be addressed with or without this playground, so we've had some good conversations with the chief, and we're going to continue those conversations, and, um, I, I think we'll be able to, we'll be able to come up with a good plan. Um, there are areas of this park, and it's, and this part, side of the park too, is, I, I feel that it's underutilized, and there might be more that we can do up there. So, I think this would be, go a long way in beginning that.
One last question.
Go ahead.
Is it possible that there'll be, uh, perhaps where you delineate the access between Palmer Ave entrance and the Goodwill Park entrance? If there may be some parking on both sides so people could walk, if they were in the Goodwill Park side, they could come down and park, still access?
Parking on Palmer Ave?
No, 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 I'm saying, when you come off Palmer Ave, you've got pretty good access and a good queuing inside the park itself.
Yeah.
Before you get to that parking area, but then could there be some other access or another parking area if people wanted to come in from the Goodwill Park side? I know you don't want people cutting through the park, but I'm just thinking in terms of maybe might be more advantageous for people to come through the Goodwill Park side to park, I don't know.
So, that.
Throwing it out there.
Yeah, so that's something I think as this, if this is approved, I think as time goes on, we start looking at the design of it, that, those are all the things that the working group or the police will all be working through this.
Okay, thank you. I would move that we accept this proposed site.
Okay, the motion is to approve the selection of the Goodwill Park as the future site for the design and construction of the all-inclusive playground facility as presented. I've got a motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion amongst the board, hearing none, are those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McConerty.
Thanks, Peter, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, report on the Commission on Disabilities. Okay. Kathleen, I'll reschedule you, no problem at all.
Thank you.
No problem at all.
Thanks for coming. Can you move that bucket?
Can someone help, yeah, thank you. Okay, report affirmative action.
I talk softly, I'll try my best.
Thank you, Dale.
I remember yelling the last time. Good evening, Madam Chair, Select Board Members, Town Officials, and, uh, public attendees. My name is, uh, Dale Cap, and I am the current Chair of the Affirmative Action Committee in, here in town, and we are here, I'm here tonight to offer a review of the, um, committee's affirmative action, uh, report that we sent to the town. So, the committee takes its directive from the town code that, um, that outlines the responsibilities for the committee, and so, um, the direction provide, asked the committee to review the affirmative action policy and relevant programs. So, and then submit any areas in which we, uh, feel the Select Board might want to consider making improvements, and then also to, uh, speak about the goals for the next year. Uh, the affirmative action committee has not received any, uh, DE, DE, DEIB concerns from the community this year. However, we do want the community to understand that we are a safe place, uh, to receive DEIB concerns from residents. As a re, as, as a resource, we offer a, and also, um, review programs. And so, uh, some of the programs were, um, thought to be current services and, um, resources. So, this year, we decided to review, uh, three of those, uh, resources.
Can you just pull that closer to you, Dale, you're so soft spoken.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Closer you are to it.
Yeah, the closer, just so people at home can hear you, thank you.
If I can move closer and just do this, okay, try that. Um, the committee also collaborates with, um, different, um, different, um, town entities and participates in activities. Um, we do feel that participating in, um, town activities, uh, allows the community to, um, excuse me, to share in being able to, uh, serve, serve, serve the community more, be able to share ideas, and, um, hopefully look for the best for the community. So, this year, um, we looked at and reviewed resources and services through, um, that were, excuse me, associated with accessibility. So, for accessibility, we looked at three different areas. We looked at the, uh, the level of accessibility for blind and visually impaired person, persons, but especially, uh, that, um, access via the town website and library services. And then we looked at just how user-friendly was the town's website in terms of people being able to find these, uh, wonderful services and resources that the town offers, because if they can't necessarily find their way to it, then, um, it's not doing what, uh, the town really, uh, uh, provides these resources for. And then, um, Madam Chair, the third list here is for a transportation project, and I'm going to ask that we remove that from the agenda tonight, because it's really not, that it's in its initial stages, and it's really not at a place that is, um, that it's ready to present to the board.
That's fine.
With your approval, yes?
Sure.
Thank you. When the committee focused on the accessibility of the town website and library services for the blind and visually impaired, uh, we did some partial testing of the town website. That partial testing was done by one of our members using, uh, a screen reader, uh, in, and, uh, what she found was that pretty much the town website was accessible, how, and however, there were issues with navigating that she experienced with her, with her, um, excuse me, with her screen reader. And so, um, we will be looking to, uh, look at that website using other screen readers, not just her own. And, um, the next thing we looked at was, we, we outreach to, uh, Sandwich IT Director, because we found that Sandwich in August of twenty twenty-two uh, did submit to the state a, uh, grant for a, um, a grant proposal, and I believe they have received that proposal, the money for that proposal, and their intent is to use that, uh, funding to, um, look at accessibility for their website, and, um, well, for the most part, and then, um, what they also plan on doing is, um, they use a, um, website provider called Civic Plus, and I believe that the town of Falmouth does also. And what they were looking at, um, was to see whether or not a program, software program by the name of Audio I could, uh, help them to make, um, their website more accessible. Audio I will look at the inconsistencies in the, uh, areas of a website that are inaccessible and will notify the user of those areas. So, um, the town of Falmouth does use, um, um, if we move on to the Falmouth I, IT Director, the Falmouth, town of Falmouth does use Civic Plus. And, um, we looked into, speaking with, one of our members spoke with the IT Director from Falmouth to ask, well, are there any intended improvements, uh, relative to accessibility that the town was planning on? And, um, well, um, it's not out of the question, it's something that needs still to be explored. And in reaching out to, through the, um, through the Personnel Director to, um, uh, Mr. Renshaw, we questioned whether or not something like that might be able to be placed on a budget for the town to explore. And we were informed that first, the cost would be sixteen thousand, and second, um, the current budget is already submitted, and so, if we wanted it to go on a budget, we would have to, uh, just submit that for the twenty twenty-six budget, I believe it was twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay, and so, uh, let's see. One of our members is, uh, has been, I'd say, attending a lot of the, uh, meetings for the Commission of Disability, and, uh, found that there were projects that the commission does that, um, relative to accessibility are something that we would then, uh, coordinate with them in the future and, and, uh, see what can be done for uh, the town website and for various other may, maybe, um, accessibility concerns that the town may have. So, um, at this point, our, our recommendation, uh, would be that we would encourage the Select Board to support budgets for software upgrades that are relative to this review. And, uh, that would mean that, um, we would look to see if the library would, um, submit any kind of, uh, ex, budget for accessibility. Uh, they just got new computers, and it was thought that just possibly, in talks with the, uh, interim IT Director, it was thought that maybe that the computers could be a source, uh, for people to access the website. So, um, there's various ways that we can provide for people to access the website, and being able to go to a library and do it is, is just another added location where you can access the town website. So, next year, we plan to learn more about plans to upgrade the town's web, website. Uh, we want to keep in touch with the library staff regarding DEI and access, accessibility. And, uh, we share, oh, as I said, we would share with the Commission on Disability on mutual projects of mutual interest, and we are going to follow, uh, Sandwich, uh, planned website accessibility upgrades. Our second project, uh, offers an enhanced way to, uh, aid in the assimila, assimilation of diverse immigrants populations and to encourage and increase the numbers of young family. We proposed a, um, what we're looking at, proposing a one central web location as a reception point. We believe that that would improve visibility of our resources and in, uh, improve ease of navigation for users. And, um, as we, uh, offer accessibility to the website, we certainly need to consider translations in multiple languages. One of the ways that we looked at, um, learn more about, um, programs that offer, uh, resource centers and one-stop resource centers is that we, um, off, we found that the Acton-Boxborough Resource Center was available and open and had been open for about, about a year. And, um, we invited that director to come and give our committee a talk about, uh, how they started, how they got up and running for their, for their website, and, um, what they offer, and, um, and how they offer it. This particular center is a physical location, and we had originally thought about, well, let's just do a physical location. However, we then began thinking that a phys, looking for a physical location could very well, uh, slow the project. And so, and even if we had a physical location, we would need a website location, so we thought that we would, uh, just start first with a website page, uh, as a central website page. And, um, our, our members also went for a visit up to the Acton-Boxborough Resort Welcome Center, and uh, it was set up very nicely, we saw the different sections that they, that they offered, um, to people, they, they offered clothing, uh, and, uh, a place where people could get clothing. They did have a private room where if someone had questions and concerns, they could sit in that private room and discuss them. They also had that private room in case they needed a translator, so that people could come in, be in the private room and meet with the translator. Uh, they did use Google Translate a lot for their translations, so, um, because I think we all realize that to get an actual translator these days is, is pretty, is, they're busy, so it's pretty difficult. Um, we also learned about, um, in, in, in attending a, uh, Human Services Committee meeting, we learned about Bonstable Network of Care website, and, uh, that website has been up for a while, and uh, the Falmouth Human Services Committee and, well, Human Services, and, um, I think the Senior Center also have, uh, used space on that Bonstable Network of Care. Um, what we don't know is who runs it and, and, uh, what its background is. And also, um, they did, I, well, what I was told was that the Bonstable Network of Care is willing to take more information from Falmouth and put it on their website. What we have to decide is, do we want to do that, is that a good idea? And, and, um, because we wouldn't be controlling that, so, um, we'd have to see, look into that. And then, um, having as the Chair of the Committee, my part was also to go out to the community, to these various activities, what workshops and meetings. And, uh, at, uh, quite a few of them, uh, people introduced themselves and talked about what they did. And so, I introduced myself and talked about, uh, the Welcome Center project as one. And the absolute interest of that was just amazing, and, and it was so amazing that one of our, uh, cultural, uh, centers in Bo, in Cambridge, Cambridge, Boston, Falmouth, um, actually created a website, so they're ready, they wanted to be ready to put their information on a town page, so, um, it's thrilling that people have that interest, and we're happy to receive it. So, as we review, as we review what we've done, it certainly aren't at an ending endpoint, but as we review what we've done, we've done, we recognize the increased complex needs of families, especially those whose primary language is other than English. We believe the central webpage furthers the ability of Falmouth to become a place where all residents are welcome, where they see and feel the efforts to help them belong, and where they can easily find and connect to, um, correct information to say, to start their lives in Falmouth. So, as I say, next year, we will continue to collaborate with current service and resource providers about loca, location, content, format. And in closing, the committee is ready to propose a new committee mission statement and is choosing a new name. Both of those will be provided at a, in a future date to the, to the, uh, Select Board for approval. So, the committee thinks and appreciates the opportunity to serve the town of Falmouth, and we'll actively continue to work to see that all residents have access to our wonderful community's resources. Along with the Select Board, we strive to assure that Falmouth and, Falmouth helps residents in need know that the town sees them and that they each belong to a community that welcomes them. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
She nailed the fifteen-minute presentation.
Look at that, she practiced. Any questions or comments?
I like the website accessibility idea, so, I like the website accessibility idea, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
My question, just one quick one. Um, have you connected with the schools at all to see what their IT is doing in terms of serving students with special needs?
When, um, we went out to the Resource Center, uh, Henry St. Julian came with us, and, um, he had two, uh, teachers, uh, with him, one was a language development teacher, and, um, they had a great interest in it, and, uh, at first, they were thinking that they would do this along with us, and then their next thought was that they might, uh, spin off from us for the initial phase and have, and set up a resource center in, I believe, what was an old library over at the high school. And so, it would be a physical area for them, and, um, I haven't heard anything on them going forward, Henry comes to our meetings all the time, and I haven't heard anything in terms of, uh, their thoughts on that going forward, or whether the project actually is, whether they're still considering it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
One thing I'd, I'd just like to add, just the tables that you had with respect to attendance and, and so forth, I think is something that other committees in the town might want to take a look at, because it's very informative. because it's very informative as to who's participating, who's not, and so forth.
In the packet, yes.
A lot of information in those tables, so thank you for, for compiling that.
You're welcome, detailed personnel.
Thank you. Okay, discuss and vote to adopt revisions to the LIP application and process guidelines. Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have this slated for, uh, ten minutes. We're gonna try to cut that down to five because we're way behind. Um, I'm just gonna kick it off, turn it over to Kim. In essence, what we're asking for Select Board approval tonight is to adopt, approve some technical revisions to the LIP. As you recall, September twenty, or April twenty-second, we brought to you the, uh, LIP Application and Process Guidelines. Uh, Town Council, working with the Housing Coordinator, has identified some, uh, some, uh, open meeting law, uh, concerns. And we feel that these revisions, which are listed in your packet, redlined version, uh, will address those concerns. So, Kim?
Hi.
Hi, Kim, welcome.
Thank you. For the record, I am Kim Fish, the Housing Coordinator. I'm not soft-spoken, so if I blow your eardrums out, I apologize now. Um, we're here tonight to, as, uh, Mr. Renshaw said, to request that the, that you vote to adopt the amended LIP Application Process and Review Guidelines as presented. To reiterate, um, as Mr. Renshaw said, April twenty-second, you voted to reestablish the LIP Review Advisory Committee, appoint a Select Board member to that committee and adopt the new LIP Application Process and Review Guidelines. Upon further review of that, um, the structure of the committee by Town Council, she found that it could potentially violate open meeting law violations by having town employees on that committee. So to correct that technical error, it, um, you, if you see on the red-lined version, to take out the LIP Advisory Committee and replace it with Town Manager advising the Select Board and then the Town Manager himself would, uh, create a working group. All others, uh, the same, um, individuals would be on this working group and it would still be, uh, the process would still remain the same and we would still meet, um, as an open meeting to keep things transparent and post an agenda. So that's where we're at and we just, um, request that, uh, you vote to adopt the amended LIP Application and Process Review Guidelines as amended.
Any questions from the Board? It's really not substantive. Mr. Muscoli?
Uh, I, with all due respect, I, I tend to disagree that it's not substantive. I mean,
Okay.
we are doing away with a committee and forming a work group and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Renshaw's intention as to how he wants to proceed going forward. Uh, my, my question is, was there any consideration given to changing the makeup of the committee to only have two town members on the, uh, tow- two town staff on the, uh, on the committee? That would avoid what the potential concern was, that three of them might somehow, um, violate the open meeting laws. Uh, I, I feel that we are throwing the baby out with the bathwater here and I am not in favor of changing the guideline, uh, changing those, those guidelines at this point and wonder if a solution would be able to keep the committee as we've had before, although not active, and, uh, and change the composition so that there would only be two staff members on that, uh, on that committee. I'm not sure why we absolutely need three, which seems to be what the problem is. So, that's my comments.
I just have a couple of comments. First, um, I, I apologize for taking the Board's time up on this, uh, and having to revisit it because I missed the open meeting law issue when I reviewed it the first time. I was just reviewing this for the LIP Guidelines and its conformity with, um, state statute and regulations. Wasn't even thinking about the open meeting law. So I apologize that this is even before you again and, um, I will try to be more diligent next time. But, um, to your point, uh, Mr. Muscoli, and the reason why I've made the recommendations that I have is, um, it's twofold. One, it's to, it's to fix the open meeting law problem. Um, and I don't think, I think that that's only part of the issue here. The second issue is that I don't think that the, that the Select Board should be appointing town staff to any working group. There is a separation of powers issue here where the town man- the Town Manager is charged with administration and the Select Board is in charge of policy. And, um, I, I do feel like it's a little bit of bleeding between the two powers to have the Select Board dictate, um, town staff time to be on a working group. That said, uh, I, I believe that this as proposed does exactly what the original form does anyway. Uh, the intent is for the working group to be just as transparent and open, um, without the, uh, the restrictions and the constraints of the open meeting law. It will allow, um, town staff to have free discussions on a daily basis in their day-to-day work as they should. Um, there is, uh, every intention to have all of the meetings be open and public, but it, they won't be required to post the agenda. They will post an agenda, it's just not a violation if, if they miss it. So there's no, there's absolutely no intent to hide the ball here. It's really just trying to adhere to the Charter and trying to adhere to the open meeting law.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, to ask a question that should be obvious, I guess, but how does employee, uh, participation cause an open meeting law violation? I have been under the impression that was for appointed and elected boards.
So what happened here is, so if, if this board, if any public board creates a group, you're creating a subcommittee that's subject to the open meeting law. It doesn't matter who you appoint to it. Any person who's on that, um, subcommittee that is created by the public body is then part of the quorum and subject to the open meeting law. So by having a board of five with three town staff on it, those three town staff members could never talk in a, a meeting at nine o'clock in the morning in Town Hall about affordable housing ever without posting a notice.
I see.
Could I ask you a question? What, what was the composition of the, uh, this committee before? I realize it kind of lost its, uh, its, it, it wasn't really used very much, but what was the composition back when it was originally set up?
So I, I, I'm gonna defer to the, the Housing Coordinator on that and, and just add, I don't, you know, during my tenure, it did not meet.
Right.
In two thousand and seven, they had, um, the same composition except there was a second Select Board member a part of the committee.
So there was no open meeting vi- concern at that point, in other words?
There was not. I don't know if there was an open meeting violation. Um, everyone here on staff today wasn't there when they were a part of it, but we want to move forward. And that's where I, I got it, was from the former one, not thinking that there could possibly be a violation by moving it forward from the two thousand and seven one. So I just did from the past one and then unfortunately, we're here with this issue today.
Madam Chair.
So you're not substantially changing anything that they will be doing?
No.
Correct?
Nothing.
That was my comment about substantive change, Mr. Muscoli.
I disagree.
Miss, Mr. Johnson-Staub?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure.
Town Council made it very clear.
Forgive me if this is clear already, but I just wanted to reinforce the distinction between the, the prior technical way i- it was structured and the current. And the key difference isn't the composition of this group that's gonna meet, it is who appoints it and who that group in turn submits a recommendation to. So if this board appoints a group, as Town Council said, whatever that, we call that group and whoever is on that group, that group is subject to the open meeting law. Whereas if the Town Manager appoints the group and that group submits its recommendation to the Town Manager, that group is not subject to the open meeting law.
I would comment that I think this has to be a nimble group because these applications come in quickly and have to be responded to. So for that reason, I would agree that not having to be held to the open meeting law is advantageous.
Ms. Goldstone?
So as I read this, it, it doesn't actually, it, you know, the applicant will be invited to participate in a pre-application joint review process, end of sentence. That used to say with the committee. And I understand that's, that prob- that committee and that appointment structure was problematic and I'm completely fine with this being a staff review process, but as I read this currently, it leaves it very unclear who conducts that review and could be, and I'm not saying that it's anyone's intent, but as I read this, it could be a review by the Town Manager alone that comes to the Select Board with a recommendation. And I'm not comfortable with that. And so I would like to see, you know, that it's by the Town Manager with a, a committee of, of his choosing or of relevant town staff or that in some way, we're stipulating that this is not a review simply by one person and then coming to the Select Board with that recommendation. So, um, if you specify that, that if you specify that it's Town Manager and a group, you're creating a subcommittee. It has to be this way. You have to designate it to one person and then independently let the Town Manager form the group. Because if, if, if it's in your charge that you're directing the Town Manager to form a group, that is just, um, sort of a superficial way of, of trying to circumnavigate the open meeting law and not succeeding at it. You're still creating the group through a straw person. So here, it's just a highly, it's, I'm, I'm really splitting hairs here. The charge will sa- will state that the, um, that you're asking the Town Manager to make the recommendation. Separate and apart from that, the Town Manager will create a group and intends to make that, to create that group, but you can't dictate to him to create the group.
I have one more question if I could.
Go ahead.
It's actually a question to, um, open up, why, why the concern? What if the Town Manager sees an application that looks so good that he just pushes it right to us without a lot of deliberation?
Because there are other parts of this town, the Affordable Housing Committee, uh, is, is, is interested in this and I have all the, no reason to doubt what, what Mr. Renshaw or any town manager's intent would be. Uh, I think the pro- I mean, I had issues with the guidelines when they came before us, uh, two meetings ago or three meetings ago and I was, I go, well, we could always change them. I really don't see, I, I understand Council's position, certainly, uh, no fault on, on her part, but I disagree. I, I, I thought the structure that we had, I mean, if, if it's really a problem that we're afraid that three people from the, you know, town government will, will, will collaborate or talk, then make it two and keep the committee. That's, that's, that's my view. That's how I feel and that's how I'll vote.
I think I'm gonna take back my previous statement because I think I misread this, but just to clarify. So the pre-application, in here it says, "reviewed by the Town Manager." The formal application phase, it is also reviewed by the Affordable Housing Committee, correct?
I don't have a problem. I would move approval as it is.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Pose.
Say no.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you for all your work on that. Thank you, Town Council. Okay, we're gonna move on to the update on the Hatchville Fire Station Construction, Fire Rescue Department Staffing, Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've asked, uh, Fire Rescue Chief Smith to, uh, give a, a brief type presentation. He's got about ten or eleven slides, I believe. Chief, are you able to power that up?
I was gonna say, this is a, this is a PETA thing.
And we all have it, so, uh, and everybody has reviewed it, correct?
Correct.
Is there anything, Mr. Renshaw, did you wanna kick anything off on this?
No, I would just, I would just respectfully ask, uh, allow Chief Smith to go through the slides and any questions regarding, you know, um, some of the information in it. Direct those questions to me. I would ask the Select Board to do that. And then if I can't answer the question, I'll, uh, seek assistance from the Chief, his command staff, or the Assistant Town Manager.
And this is an informational presentation to the Select Board?
Correct.
Go ahead, Chief Smith.
Good evening. Let me get some of my notes here. Okay, so, uh, we wanted to take the opportunity to give you an update on the station construction. We also have with us Peggy Nickerson and, um, George Rogers, who are part of our Building Committee. And they can just, uh, you know, add a, a little bit to our, uh, brief presentation. And let's get this going here. All right. So with regards to the, the station, our general contractor has reported that they're near substantial completion. It's related to the building construction itself. They still haven't provided a date, but it's pending based on recent progress with the construction at that site. Issues related to our electrical subwork, uh, i- i- you know, some delays have occurred as a result of personnel shortage, which is, which we understand is pretty common. And the apparatus bay door manufacturer are two notable reasons for some of our delays. Cabinets, we had some lamination, uh, issues where we started to have some delamination and that was a delay. And a- again, other issues that might come up during construction in the last several weeks. Otherwise, the project is just about two months, uh, delayed from, uh, completion of the project. Furnishing, equipment deliveries, uh, some was damaged, so it had to go back. And other work such as landscaping continues. Although it's noted that we've anticipated that the building could be ready for us by September or October, the most recent update by the, uh, our OPM was related to obtaining an occupancy certificate based on final construction completion. And again, we don't have a date. But for us, we have other work that's going on, particularly, um, through the IT side of things, which is our alerting system that's necessary to operate in our station to make it functional for our personnel. Other IT, uh, systems, including Comcast connections and Open Cape, uh, fiber work i- is, is, has not started yet. So these delays are, you know, are, are putting things off a little bit, but they continue to work. We continue to get updates and we're, um, you know, we're optimistic that we'll continue to, to see, uh, you know, um, some work and continue to go forward with, um, you know, with the completion of the station. And again, this is our best forecast right now based on what's being told to us by our contractor and, um, we recently met Thursday evening with our Building Committee and we had a good update then, but we're still, um, a little, little bit, um, aways from the substantial completion.
Chief, can I interject something too?
Sure.
Um, so I've had an opportunity over the past several months to participate directly with the Building Committee and, and what a great group that has been, uh, well picked. I, I just wanna say that. In addition to, you know, a month and a half, two months slowdown in terms of, uh, equipment we're waiting on, I'm really happy to report that we're gonna deliver this project under budget. There's some contingency monies. I don't wanna stipulate what that's going to be at this point, but it's looking today, uh, that the project's gonna be delivered under budget as well.
So if anybody's driven by, you know, you'll still notice that, um, there are still plywood, uh, sections that are still in place in front of the bay doors. The bay doors are being installed. You know, there's a little bit of a backstory, but suffice to say that that's been, uh, an ongoing issue, but it's getting worked on. So the photo here depicts the front and the rear of the station. The front wood paneling, uh, again, remains in place while the door company, Next Generation, completes the door installation. We're grateful for Next Generation's work and for their communication and working out issues related to the dorm, the door manufacturer, which has been very frustrating for all parties. The doors will go up and will function, but issues related to the manufacturing defects that we've encountered will be addressed in time, but the doors are, are being installed as we speak. I'll state that the, the work, working relationship as the Town Manager kind of alluded to has been phenomenal. Teamwork associated with our GC, tower construction, our architect from Context, our OPM from Vertex, has been outstanding. This includes our fire department staff, Building Committee, uh, Greg Endicott from our facilities, and the Town Administration. So if both George and Peggy would like to, uh, just add a couple of comments if you'd like.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, uh, as the Chief said, this project has, you know, it's taken over a year. There were some long lead issue, items with generators and things that we did anticipate. At this point, we wanna make sure we get it right. And to the credit of the town staff and the fire chief and his staff, we're in the budget, which is a great thing. And we're gonna develop, uh, deliver a really, really good building for this community. It's gonna last a long time, so we're pretty excited about that. So we're working through some punch, punchless issues right now. Anything you would like to add there, Chief, my name is?
Just one person, um, 'cause I know a lot of town employees don't get the kudos they deserve. Melanie Bush, who is the Assistant at the Treasury and Finance. She has been at all our meetings. I know she's been, uh, during the OPM meetings. She's been awesome. She's been awesome. She's been a tremendous help to us. And they've mentioned a lot of the other people, but as a town employee, she's gone over and above with what she's helped us with as well.
Good. Thank you.
Nice to hear.
Great to know.
Thank you.
We were, Celtics were up at the, at the end of the quarter, so that was good. So yes, so that's, in a nutshell, is our update on the, on the construction. It's been, you know, all told, everything's been moving right along, and our committee meets once a month. We go to the state, we go to the fire station out in Hatchville during the day on Thursdays, and we get a good update from all of the, you know, the, you know, the labor side of things out there. And, you know, we couldn't be more happy with the work that's in, in the partnership that's been going on at Hatchville Station. So with regards to operational planning for the new station, equipment-wise, with regards to what we need for equipment in that station, we have a new ambulance and a new fire engine that's on order, and they were, you know, as a result of approval at town meeting. Delivery times, as we noted when we made our request, you know, are very lengthy due to manufacturing delays since COVID. However, we hope for delivery of our new fire engine sometime after January of 2025, and the new ambulance in December of 2024. However, in the meantime, we anticipated the need to assign our equipment in Hatchville, and we have a spare fire engine and an ambulance to deploy when the station is ready for staffing. So we'll have the equipment there, and then when we get the new equipment in with our staff, we'll manage, you know, moving our equipment around, but we'll have equipment for that particular station at the onset. District-wise, we're, we're creating districts for dispatch purposes. Again, we're working within our computer-aided dispatch program. We know what, how we wanted to carve out the district some time ago, but we have to get all these running assignments into the computer, and we're in the middle of a conversion with our CAD program. So we're doing that right now, and it should just be a little bit, about a week or two of work, which is what we anticipated. So we're going to go from five districts, as you can imagine, to six districts. And the new district will augment the north and the east Falmouth Station that have responded to the Hatchville area, that kind of converge on it for decades. Personnel-wise, we require two personnel to operate or respond on any vehicle, ambulancer or a fire engine, at the minimum, and we'll need to have two personnel to be assigned to this station, and the firefighters will respond on either the engine or the ambulance when dispatched. Personnel staffing, suffice to say, and we've, we've discussed this in previous meetings, but we require 16 right now to staff five stations at the start of each shift. A shift either is at seven, seven in the morning or 7:00 PM, 12-hour shifts, or for a 24-hour period, 7:00 to 7:00. This is part of contractual requirements for our daily staffing, and to staff six stations, we're going to require 18 at the start of each shift. So as I stated, we need 18 to staff six stations. We must account for and manage daily short and long-term vacancies. This includes the hiring process to get personnel into recruit training, which is a 10-week program. And then upon successful completion of the academy and back for department orientation and training, until personnel are considered qualified to be shift, counted as shift strength, which is part of the start of the, the daily, the start of shift complement. So long-term leave can be related to on or off-duty injuries that are length, that are very lengthy in time, and we see that at, for months at a time in some instances. Short-term leave is related to vacations, military leave. Currently, we have nine personnel that are guard members, so that you can understand they have to do their monthly obligations for the weekends, and they also have to get ac, they get activated for their two weeks, and there is potential for other long-term activations. We're working to determine what is the reasonable number of shifts that will be needed to fill on an overtime basis through mandated coverage at the start of the shift, which are holdovers, or to establish voluntary overtime positions that would allow us to schedule for these positions. Otherwise, we have short, when we have short notice, we have short notice when some personnel call out sick at the start of the shift, and that we don't know about until they call us in the morning, and then we have to manage the staffing at the, for the start of the shift through overtime.
Chief, if I may stop you right there.
Yes, sir.
One comment I want to bring to the board's attention. Chief's about to transition to a slide that shows the numbers, but the bullet with regards to medical, individuals out on long-term medical, injured on duties, we're seeing a trend, unfortunately. Obviously, everyone knows fire rescue is a hazardous job, right? So people are going to get injured. What chief and I and his command staff are looking at, assistant town manager and human resources, is maybe some kind of creative, innovative ways that we can kind of manage that process a little bit better. We're, we're looking at, you know, some, some ways to, to reduce the number of injuries. I see a lot of stretcher-related injuries. If you can imagine carrying a patient down a stairwell in a stretcher, that is just kind of prone to injuries. So we're looking at equipment. We're looking at some, maybe some special training that we can get, because we're, I'm really hyper, we're really hyper-focused on that injured-on-duty number, because you're going to see right now, go ahead and transition, chief. I think it's the next slide that shows, that number is 12, and it has an impact on our, on our daily staffing numbers when we have that many folks. And it's unfortunate, because it's a hazardous job, and people are going to get injured. But at the extent that we can reduce that number from 12 to eight and get folks back in service is what we're going to strive for. Because I just want the board to know that we see it, we're trying to address it, again, through some innovative, creative ways to kind of reduce the number of injuries.
Absolutely. And again, the last bullet shows, you know, there's a working estimate. We kind of look at what would be like, sort of a sustainable number, that if we had 80 personnel that were available for shift-strength work, that they would provide us with 20 personnel at the start of each day, and if we're going to be at an 18-person roster at the start of each shift, that helps to kind of cushion, that, you know, if we lose somebody at the beginning of the day due to illness. So right now, we're kind of, that's kind of like a goal of ours, but right now, as, you know, I will show, we're falling short of that only because of long-term issues that we're currently seeing. So the good news, the override staffing for the new 14 positions. Our staffing goal that was part of our presentation in 2023 at town meeting, outlined that we could expect to have at least seven of the 14 override shift strength by November of 2024, and maybe get those other seven by November of 2025. This was based on many factors, including, you know, civil service and then the removal of civil service, but it required us to format a new hiring process, and then, once we get through the whole hiring process, to be able to get a available seat in the academy. So working with HR, town council, town administration, we came up with, you know, a new hiring process based on applications and such, advertising, which we've never done before, and our, the response was excellent. So we've been able to gather a lot of applicants, and we've been able to find some qualified personnel. And so we can report that of all the 14 override positions, we filled them all, including recent vacancies. So right now, all of our vacancies, including the overrides of all, they're in some type of transition. So we've hired everybody that was, you know, that the voters were gracious to put forward for us. Currently, seven personnel have recently become shift-strength qualified. They recently graduated in March, April, and six others are just graduated and are undergoing training, and we anticipate that those six should be qualified by August. Now, again, increase our strength and numbers. So we're ahead of schedule from what was presented previously. Personal staff, personnel staffing and, and our impacts. So as of today, so we had one firefighter return to duty, so the number now is 24. However, we had four vacancies due to resignations and retirements, and again, we advertised for qualified applicants on or around March, and we developed a list of 10 applicants that we wished to interview. One withdrew before their scheduled interview. We have since provided conditional levels of employment to four applicants, and they are in the administrative process for the medical exams, agility testing, and then to request an academy seat once they've been through all that. We have 11 that are on long-term leave, again, one returned as of Friday, excuse me, and then the others that are on leave, and the nine that are in training. Six are the recent graduates, and three we have in the academy right now who are slated to graduate in mid-July. They have a break in their training for 4th of July week, so they close the academy down, so they'll be back with us for a little bit. We're going to get a little bit of training while they're back with us, and once they go back, and, you know, hopefully they'll be, you know, we'll, we'll keep their, their minds going for working towards their qualification. So this accounts for 24 personnel who are currently unavailable for shift staffing. So this leaves us the, now, 68. We have 92 that are budgeted through, you know, through our current process of budgeted positions for line personnel, which is the captains, lieutenants, and the firefighters. So minus the 24, we're at 68, so that's an average of 17 per shift. So at the 16 level, we're one up, at the 18 level, we're one down, but we, again, are working on that. Just to give you a kind of an overview of how our staffing process has been going in the last few months or several months, we hired 18, we've hired 18 personnel from March of 2023 to Aug, to June of 2024. Two personnel we had that we hired were, had previous fire department experience and were academy-trained, so they started, and we were able to get them shift-strength fairly quickly. Seven personnel graduated in March, March 28th, and they're all shift-strength. Six personnel graduated May 10th, and they're undergoing training right now. And then three personnel, as I stated, are in our recruit training, and we anticipate their graduation as of July 26th, and from all reports, they're doing very, very well in the academy. So of these 18 nine hires, nine are shift-strength, and we're working to get everybody, you know, working through their qualifications. Timing, the timeline for staff in the stations, again, we, we do anticipate that our current six recruits and those three who are slated for graduation in July will be shift-strength by October, based on our recent experience with how our training's been going. Takes a little bit of time. Our staff has to do a lot of legwork to get the trainers in place, the mentorship going, and finding the opportunities to get everybody through these weekly training programs, and we've been working very diligently to see that, so that we can keep on track. We hope to see a reduction in those personnel currently on long-term injury leave, as the town manager noted, and we monitor their progress on a regular basis. So they, so we know, you know, we know how they, how they're doing, and we're hopeful that their, their rehab will continue, and they'll be able to get back in, in short order. Also, the town will need to bargain with the firefighters' union to increase our current 16 start-of-the-shift staffing minimum to 18. And, you know, and I would, you know, you know, I could ask the town manager, assistant town manager, to update us if they'd like on that. Otherwise, based on ongoing or future personnel impacts associated with long-term leave, resignations, retirements, and bargaining, we may be, we may be able to staff six stations by the end of the calendar year. We remain optimistic on all fronts that we'll continue to see staffing improvements, but unforeseen issues that impact our staffing are not new to our department, and we continue to utilize overtime to manage the, to the best of our ability with the available resources that we have. Again, I, for me, I want to extend my, my thanks to my senior chief officers, Deputy Thrasher and Deputy Abston, for helping to manage all the administrative legwork that's necessary on a daily basis and work with all the shifts to manage all of the, you know, the impacts and challenges that we have on a daily basis. And also, just, you know, our administrative staff who's helped to kind of push along the, the hiring side of things, and to our personnel for their professionalism, and those that continue to step up to assess, to assist when needed, because we, we have had, you know, quite a bit of overtime and some mandates, and, you know, we have good, good parts of the month, and sometimes we have some more holdovers that we wish we could avoid, but in the end, you know, everybody just keeps coming together to make this work. So we're very appreciative of everybody that's working in the department to kind of keep on staffing.
Mr. Renshaw, I have a question.
Yes.
When I look at that very last bullet, and union bargaining, may be able to staff six stations by the end of 2024. May is a word that concerns me.
Based on that number of 80?
Yes.
Staffing that we'll need.
So my question to the town manager is, if you are not able to staff six stations fully by the end of the calendar year 2024, what's the plan?
So I have no intentions at this stage of opening the Hatchville Station until we're able to man it completely, reach that 80 threshold. That's why I focused on that, you know, the injured-on-duty, getting those numbers of folks that are unavailable back in service. So I think to answer the question, right now, I have no, no intention or desire to open the station until I'm confident that we can operate all six without having a negative impact on any other one existing station. That's my, that's my goal right now. As you heard earlier.
Thank you.
There's some, there's some, there's some work that may, remains, work that remains to be done, and, you know, the language was important, because the chief referenced one of the first slides, to make it operationally available and, and a usable station. There's, there's, there's IT work that's remaining outstanding, the station alerting system, still working through some of that. I think that's got a shorter window of, of time. But my point is this, they, they did a great job, Tower, our contractor, of getting this thing up and, and, and close to a certificate of occupancy. It's not going to be operationally ready, though, until the late fall, I believe, based on some of the updates. So we're going to continue to work hard on getting that number from, what is it, 68 now, to 80? And again, it's getting these folks out of the academy, it's getting our injured folks back in service, getting them healthy and, and back in service, and we're going to monitor that, looking at ways going forward that we can reduce those number of injuries to the extent that we can. It's a dangerous job, but looking for ways that we can implement some creative programs that are going to hopefully reduce that number so that we don't have that issue. 80 is the magic number, as it stands right now, and I have no intentions of opening this station until we're confident we can, we can operate all six.
And I like the fact that you are, it's coming in under budget, which never happens, and that you're over your, you have exceeded your timeline in terms of hiring. So those are, those are pieces of really good news. And thank you very much for that clarification, because I understood it operationally, because you said even your, your open net or your computer systems aren't even ready to go yet. So I get that. This board has struggled for a very long time with the staffing piece, and so I'm very happy to hear that that's your plan moving forward. So thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Brown?
I would just say thank you to the chief for moving that hiring along. It's a lot better than I thought we would be at this point, so I appreciate that. And, you know, maybe this is all working out, you know? You've got plenty of time to get the station just right, continue on with the staff fulfillment. I think the timing is better than I thought it would be.
And also the fact that you're not just pushing to open it, because there are things that need to happen. I think that's a really good point.
I want to be realistic with the board and the community. You know, this station was a, was a significant investment, and I don't want it to sit idle for any longer than we possibly have to. Staffing is an issue. And, and again, I've said this before, regardless of, you know, the timeline, I've said we think it's going to be late fall of this year before we get it operationally ready, and then hopefully by the end of the calendar year, we have that number 80. We're going to continue to experience challenges with, with folks, if, if that number 12 goes, or 11 now, I guess, if, if, you know, heaven forbid we don't, but if we, if, continue to see those injuries on duty going at a pace that I think is a concern and we need to reduce, if that continues to happen, we're going to continue to eat into that minimum, that 16 now, it's got, has to, has to be 18 eventually, but we're going to continue to kind of struggle with that number of 16. So I just, I've said it the last time this presentation was given, I'm going to say it again, I'm going to do everything as your town manager to ensure that we're keeping all of this, all the existing five stations operational, but that staffing number, things impact that. People going out unexpectedly, being injured, military leave, that whole list of reasons. So I just want the select board and the community to understand, it's not a panacea and a magic bullet that we're going to, all of a sudden, there's not going to be any issues with station, manning all of the stations. There's a possibility. We're, we're working great on it.
However, however, that has improved tremendously.
Thank you, it has.
It is, and, and we want to continue to see that continue to happen.
Because of the efforts of, of the chief and his, and his command staff, and, and some direction from town administration. But yeah, thank you for recognizing that it has, it has improved.
Mr. Brown, did you want to say?
I just want to say, maybe if we get to a point where we're not quite staffed, but the station's ready, maybe we could throw it out and say it could be staffed by overtime, even if it's not 100%. Break the station in slowly and, you know, get it, get the bugs out as we, because, you know, when it's new, it's, I don't know if that's a reasonable idea, but.
We've talked about, we've talked about that as an option, the chief and I and, and the assistant town manager. assistant town manager. My concern with that is that going back and forth based on, you know, the overtime is always an issue for us and the kind of the inconsistency of opening Hatchfield, you know, one week or one, one few day period and then having to close it again. When we do this and flip the switch, my preference would be just to go, you know, open all six and have the staffing required to, to, to staff all six.
I don't think it's good to do that.
We did talk about it as an option, but.
With any station, to have them.
I mean, we've made a lot of, you know, and, and again, I thank my senior chief officers for, you know, putting up with me sometimes, because this, this goes on between myself and the town manager, and we have a lot to discuss, and I bring it back to them, and we try and work to see how well we can manage and/or what challenges we have. We've come up with options for staffing the station, what we have for compliments of personnel, because if everything, if everybody came back to work and everybody on paper was, was available, then we'd have 23 personnel per shift. But because of these challenges that we're running into, this is where we, you know, we continue to have a lot of our discussions. So we have plans in place, we've been discussing it for a while. Nobody wants to see the station open more than us. We're excited about it because it's a beautiful station, and I hope maybe we can do a ribbon cutting before we do anything and get everybody out there to see the station, because it's, it's, it's a great project, and I think that you'll all be impressed with it. And again, we'll, we'll continue to address the things that we need to, and the hiring process, you know, that, you know, we're actually, we're going to be proactive, we're going to try and advertise again just to create a list, so that if we do have any anticipated openings, that we have, we already have a vetted list of personnel that would be available, you know, to hire, which we haven't done before. We've always just had vacancies, we look for personnel through application process, but we're going to try and be a little proactive this time around, and we're going to hopefully do it this week. We've got some work for town council to do a little bit, but once we get over the hump, you know, I'm hopeful that we can keep that process going as well.
Awesome. And thank you for your commitment to the six stations.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just a question, I'm sure Mr. Renshaw, you'll keep us advised as to the progress and where we're going with respect to official opening of the station.
Certainly will, yes.
And I appreciate your efforts in staffing and your transparency and, you know, coming before us and giving us a real, accurate situ, what the accurate situation is. So thank you, chief.
Glad to do it. It's a lot of work, but happy to do it.
Thank you. Okay.
Peter, just leave it.
Escape?
Can you escape?
Okay, we're going to move on to approved application for a change of hours of an all-alcoholic beverages in holder license Wagner Hospitality and Management LLC, doing business as Holiday Inn of Falmouth located 291 Jones Road, Falmouth. Someone here to represent the Holiday Inn. All right, Mr. Renshaw, I'll throw it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant Wagner Hospitality and Management, which as you noted is doing business as Holiday Inn Falmouth, submitted a request for change of hours of an all-alcoholic beverages license by letter back on May 29th. The applicant states that the establishment's current hours of serving alcohol are from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM Monday through Saturday, and from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM on Sundays. Madam Chair and Board, the requested change of hours being proposed is Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Sundays from 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM. The applicant stated in their application that it believes the change would better accommodate the desires of its guests, and that the requested proposed new hours of alcohol service mirror those that had been approved back in 2022 under former management. The applicant states that it will strictly adhere to its all-glass off-tables, bar, and patrons-out-by-130 AM policy, which has been in place for a while. The police department has reviewed the application and has no objections to its approval. And Madam Chair and Board, my recommendation would be that the select board approve the application for a change of all, change of hours of an all-alcoholic beverages in holder license Wagner Hospitality and Management LLC, doing business as Holiday Inn Falmouth, located at 291 Jones Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board?
Sounds okay to me, they're on holiday.
On holiday? Do you want to move that, Mr. Brown?
I move that we approve this change in hours to request a change of hours being proposed Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Sundays from 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM. The applicant states, the applicant states that it believes this change would better accommodate the desires of its guests. Is that the motion, actually?
No. Motion to approve the application for a change of hours.
Yep.
Got it. I think you did read that.
I guess I already got it.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request for a variance to the sign code, measurement of sign area, freestanding signs, Aldi 39 Davis Straits in Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw, do you want to?
Just real quick comments. As you all recall, back on June 3rd, select board approved the variance request for the dimensions of signs one and two. I hope I've got those numbering correct. Those are the signs to be placed on the exterior facing the building. However, the board requested that the applicant reconfigure the design of signs three and four, the freestanding signs, to better address concerns with driver line of sight obstruction, as well as perhaps provide some data or information concerning the luminosity or the brightness of the signage. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. For the record, my name is Russell Hasman. I'm the president and CEO of National Sign Corporation. With me is Richard Durbis from Aldi. He was here at the June 3rd meeting. I was unable to make that meeting, so I had a representative on my team make the presentation. I did have a chance to review the video for the June 3rd meeting, and I would like to comment how, you know, the compliment the board on having that information available. I did note the comments that were made by the commissioners, and I'm, I know things are getting late, so I'm going to try to get through this. If I'm going too fast, you can just tell me to slow down a little bit. So as Mr. Renshaw indicated, the, we were allowed to have, you were kind enough to grant us permission to go with 120 square foot. The issue was the illumination, the illumination of the signs. And as Mr. Renshaw pointed out on the June 3rd meeting, there is no specific guidelines with respect to the amount of illumination in your, in your regulations. So what I wanted to present to you this evening is that, you know, of the 120-square-foot sign, the Aldi, the Aldi copy, which is the white, is which is going to be the most, the brightest portion of the sign face occupies 9% of the sign area. The darkest portion of that is the dark blue area, and that portion represents 31% of the, of the area. So, and I did some light, some light meter readings, and we talked, and we're measuring the brightness of the faces in terms of foot candles, okay? And so when I did my light readings between the white and the blue, the, the blue was almost, almost opaque, which almost goes to black, even though there is some light transmittance, and I do have a photo of that to share with you on what that looks like, and it is in your package. So let me see, I fired this right, I hear it is right here. So this is a, a picture of, of the Aldi signs at night, and as you can see, obviously the white portion is, is the brightest. I'll make that a little bit larger for you. The dark does, does transmit some light, but in my light readings, it was almost negligible in the amount of light that transmit, is transmitted. And then the outer bands, the, the red, orange, and yellow bands, as well as the Aldi logo, is intensity, the intensity is somewhere between the brightest of the white and the darkest of the blue. Okay? Now, the other item that came up in the June 3rd meeting was, is it capable to dim the sign if, if, if it's felt that the sign is too bright? And we do have the technology that we can dim the sign in the event that that becomes an issue. Okay? So respectfully request that the commission consider this information with respect to the illumination, and we would certainly be in a position to work with, work with you on, you know, if it is deemed that the sign is too bright once it's installed. Okay? The other two issues, as was stated, is the other directional sign, the monument sign. And so what we have done to address the comments that were made, the conversation was around the width of the brick base, as you may recall from the last submission. The brick base was a little bit wider than the sign. We are, just to remind the commission that we are compliant in, in sign size of 16 square feet, and we are compliant in sign height, which is nine feet when we're allowed 18. So what we did was we reduced the, the client was very interested in maintaining the brick base, so we redesigned the brick base to only be as wide. We're going to have a steel column inside of that, and we, and in order to encapsulate the steel column within the brick base, that is as small as I can go in order to have the structural steel, the size that I need to support the sign, based on the engineering review that we did. Okay? Is there any questions about?
Questions from the board?
56 inches.
Mr. Brown?
I'm just wondering if a pickup truck's going to be interfered, their sightline is interfered with by the sign, but I guess it's far enough back.
Yeah, the sign setback, the sign setback is, 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 I think nine, it's five and a half feet from the, from the curb line. Okay? The, the sign has to be within the property line. You don't have a setback requirement in your regulations.
Correct.
And I think it was you, Mr. Brown, that said that you had a traffic experience in this area. Was somebody had an accident in the area? Oh, that was you, Mr. Zalinski? So, so I remember, I remember listening to that commentary from the June 3rd meeting. So, and, so it, so, Mr. Brown, did I answer your question with respect to the concerns about?
I was just curious if, if it's going to block the view from a pickup truck. It's five foot six, you probably, if you're up in a pickup truck, you probably, the sign would interfere with your vision, except you might be far enough out toward the curb that it might not be a problem.
Are you talking about somebody exiting the property?
I would be, yes.
Okay. So, so the, yeah, the sign is, the sign is 60 feet away from the entrance? So by the time you get out to where you would normally stop to be able to look left and right, that sign is 60 feet away from you?
That's a good point. All right, that's helpful.
All right. Okay, and lastly?
Mr. Muscali, a question?
So I was going to ask, but go ahead, I'll, I'll wait, and then I'll ask Mr. Renshaw.
And then the last drawing that we have is the reconfiguration of the entry monument. And thank you for being in support of allowing us to put the Aldi logo there. We, so we have modified the sign, sign size, which, and it is now, we went from, we went from a sign of 4.67 square feet down to 3.4 square feet, so we're closer to the three square feet that you allow in your regulation. And we reduced the size, the sign height from four foot six to four foot, which is now in compliance with your regulation. Okay? So we made those two adjustments on this, and we kept the, and we, although I don't need a base cover, you know, a brick base as wide as it, we thought we would keep them both the same, which really allows us to put the, and we, and we had the enter and the arrow to the right in one line, and we made it in two lines to provide adequate visibility of the letters. Now, the two and a half inch letters, you know, we need that for some visibility. We get about, we get about 25 feet of visibility for each vertical inch of letter height, so that'll give us about, about 60, 65 feet of visibility for people to be able to legibly read those letters. Anything, if we made it any smaller than that, we wouldn't be able to make the letters large enough to be able to read them at a, at a safe distance for public safety.
And are they internally lit as well?
This is also internally, yeah, yes, sir.
Similar lumens is. Is this also, is this also adjustable if it becomes?
Any, any of the, any of the lighting is adjustable on a dimming, on a dimmer that we could install? Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Go ahead, Mr. Muscali.
No, I'm just a little confused. Is, is, is this, how does the building department feel about this? I mean, is this, as proposed, the building department is okay with? As far as?
Madam Chair and select board member Muscali, no, the building department's recommendation stands, and my recommendation back on June 3rd was to, to, to follow the recommendation of the building department. Select board chose to go in a different direction, which I respect, it's your decision. So no, is the building department okay with this? I haven't asked the building department to really review their recommendation. I, I met with Gary Street, the building commissioner, this morning, and, and he expressed some concerns about possibly a precedent that this sets in terms of, you know, signage. But, you know, the variance that the board granted at the, at the June 3rd meeting with regards to the sign mounted on the side of the building was, was larger than what would have typically been allowed. So I'm trying to give you the best answer, no, I don't believe the building commissioner's office is supportive. They would prefer that, you know, we, we maintain compliance with the existing bylaw, the regulations, and if there's a desire to amend those bylaws, then go through that process.
We already decided that at the last meeting. So I'm talking about what they've come back with. Has that been reviewed by the building department?
No, I did not ask them to review.
It's in our hands now.
The building department's recommendation with regards to the two freestanding signs, one and two, is the same as it was back on June 3rd.
Okay, all right. I would just say, though, we're not really following their lead exactly, but the planning board, I think, I said this at the last meeting, was on the right track with the CVS, trying to encourage them to not overscale a wall to get a big sign. If you look at Cappys, they got that big giant facade just so it can say Cappys in giant letters. So that's where the law and the rule comes in. So I appreciate the understated building facade, and so we're giving them a little extra sign, but they could easily design a gigantic wall to accommodate a big sign. Yeah, if they wanted to.
May I?
Go ahead, Mr. Zalinski.
My thoughts still haven't changed about the base of that sign. It was, it's still solid, it's, no matter if you cut it down six inches, it's still a solid, it's a solid piece that people either have to look through, that they're oncoming, or you've got pedestrian traffic going right there that is going to be masked by that sign. My only concern last time was, I didn't have any problem with the ones on the, on the building, but it was right at the roadway.
Except that this is shorter, now it's only four feet tall.
You're still going to see over four feet. I mean.
Not a problem for me, but I guess maybe for some people. All right. What's the average car height?
If I could just add something to that, so I understand the, your concern. One of the things that's going to happen, and I don't have the property owner here with us today, is the DOT is requiring the curb cut be shortened. So that distance that you see from here, from the sign to the curb, is actually supposed to increase. So it's going to be, instead of being eight feet, I don't know if it's like, what it is, 12, but it's going to be more than it is because the curb cut from DOT, I guess, has to be narrowed as part of the property.
You're looking at the future of the placement.
So that's going to be a little even further in from the cut. I just wanted to give you guys all the information.
Yeah, and when I did my initial assessment, you know, and making my recommendations to our client, I spent quite a bit of time selecting the locations, driving up and down the street. Line of sight is, line of sight concerns for boards such as this is very important. And, you know, so as you're pulling out, as you're pulling out in here and you're, you're pulling up, so, you know, you have adequate, you know, even not getting very close to the, to the white line here in order to be able to pull out to see, those signs are so far out of your peripheral, peripheral vision at that point that I really don't, I really would not characterize that as being a line of sight issue.
I'm good. I'm over that, so.
Okay.
I'm good, so you're nice.
Thank you.
I would move approval. With the, with the caveat that if we get complaints, we can revisit and request the potential dimming of the lights.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, sorry it ran so late.
That's okay.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Oh, good. Okay, discuss and vote to sign a home rule petition regarding a real estate transfer fee. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packets tonight are copies of the home rule petition, draft legislation, and the Article 33 explanation for your reference. Town meeting voted favorably to authorize the board to submit the proposed petition and draft legislation for a real estate transfer fee. I requested the town council draft the proposed legislation to reflect the article that was approved at town meeting in April, incorporating the vital elements of discussion of the select board on the matter. The legislation being proposed requires a seller of residential real estate to pay a certain percentage of the purchase price, as you all recall, on a graduated scale to the town to be deposited with the Affordable Housing Fund. Proceeds would then be used to create and maintain affordable housing in the town. Certain transactions are exempt from the fee, including transfers to the government, transfers between family members, and the transfer of housing units that are subject to an affordable deed restriction. Madam Chair and the board, if enacted, the act would go into effect 90 days after being Madam Chair and the Board, if enacted, the act would go into effect 90 days after being signed into law, and this petition would be submitted to the state legislature upon your approval tonight.
Questions from the board?
Consistent with what we've asked for.
What is it, Mr. Garrison?
I, I wanted to convey some information to you about the draft that you have in front of you. Last.
I'm sorry?
Do you have anything about that?
No, I don't. I submitted cop, or draft copies. Mr. Garrison had asked for a draft. After the Board had an opportunity to see it, I waited until the packets were distributed. I submitted a copy. I sent him a copy as well.
Okay.
Right, and it was in your packet, too. And the town manager was, sent me a copy on Thursday evening, which I very much appreciated, and on, under the dripping here. And Friday morning, I took a look at the draft and compared it to various other petitions that have been filed. And I sent a note back to the town manager with a note saying that there are five items that I spotted in the other, other petitions, which are not in this petition, and I'm not sure why. They, they are, first, the distribution by, these are exclusions now. These are items that would be, transactions, categories that would be excluded. And the, and when I'm listing are ones that are in other petitions that are not in this one. First, and I'm not sure what the importance of these are, and I defer to Town Council on the significance of all but one. Distribution by trustees of a trust to beneficiaries of such a trust. Secondly, transfers to the trustees of a trust in exchange for beneficial interest received by the seller in such a trust. Third, transfers made in partition of land and improvements thereto pursuant to Chapter 241. Fourth, transfers to a mortgage and foreclosure, and then there's a long paragraph that follows that. And the fifth one, transfers consisting of the division of marital assets under the provisions of Che, Section 34 of Chapter 208 and other provisions of law. The most important one of these five categories, in my judgment to add, is the division of marital assets. In all of my public presentations about the transfer fee proposal, I have mentioned transfers as a result of divorce settlements as one of the categories that would be listed. My op-ed in the Enterprise on this transfer fee recommended, excuse me, included mention of this exception. And the fact sheet that I sent to the town meeting also included this exception. Most importantly, the text of the explanation of the transfer fee in warrant Article 33 at the April Town Meeting included divorce settlements to be an excluded category. So, I defer, as I say, to Town Council about the other four. I don't know their significance. But I do say that if we are gonna go, go ahead with this tonight, and I urge you to do so, that you amend it by adding the division of marital assets to the list of exclusions. I also noted to the town manager, there's a typo, Section 5E, there's the word or, and it should be four, F-O-R. Anyway, that, those are my comments, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear them.
Town Council?
I'd be happy to speak to that.
Please, yes.
I had a, a draft that was submitted to me that had all of that stuff in it. I consolidated some of them into one of the exceptions that just said pursuant to a court order that encompasses divorce settlements. It also encompasses, there was some other, some other provision that was just mentioned.
Partition.
That would also write the partition, which is also included as a decree from the order of the court. I purposefully deleted the exception for, for conveyances among trustees because it's a clear loophole to, to having to pay the fee. You could easily just create some, some very thoughtful estate planning and never have to pay the transfer fee by creating trusts and conveying them among trustees and among trusts. So, I took that out, and I think that everything else was distilled in there. They're just, I simplified the language. I'll also just add very briefly that I did add another provision that none of the exceptions can be deleted, but by bylaw, exceptions can be added. So, if somewhere down the line, if this does get passed, there's, there's always room. There's always room for change.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
No, as someone who does a little bit of estate planning, I, I think you're absolutely right that, that with respect to trusts, there are a, a number of possibilities that would, you know, be loopholes to, to the transfer fee, so I agree with you.
Go ahead.
Um, I guess I, I question how transfers made between family members, including parents and children, grandparents and grandchildren, is different from transfers to trusts? So, that the same thing can, essentially accomplishes the same thing in many cases.
But at least it's a limited number of people.
It, it, right. It's, and it's one of the accepted exemptions that is found across communities. It was in every single example that I found of some of the dozens of petitions that are being submitted, and it was part of the conversation, so.
I think family members and trusts are a little different. I mean, trusts can be formed for other reasons, not, not with respect to related parties. So, I think we're carving out those relationship, grandchildren, grandparents, things like that, but trust is a little bit, a little bit different.
It's also more open. It's an open transaction, whereas there's, with the trust and having blind trustees, you often just don't know who's the beneficiary and where the, who actually owns it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to authorize the Town Council to make the appropriate action to submit the home rule petition as drafted.
I would second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, we're gonna move into review of the Select Board liaison assignments. In your packets, you have a, a copy of the current assignments. Usually, we just take out Ms. Scott Price's name, and we would put Ms. Goldstone in that column. The Chair has fewer because of the, because of availability and the, the other commitment that I have with the town manager twice weekly.
So, I had reached out to Select Board Member Goldstone to ask if she would be interested in taking the Beach Committee, although I've really enjoyed working with the Beach Committee. Their membership has voted to change the meeting date to Tuesday. And I have recently signed up to be on the Short Term Rental Committee, which meets on Tuesday at that same time, that same date of the month. And she's agreed, and I'm gonna take.
I would be happy to take up Beach Committee. And I think we agreed that Mr. Brown would take Agricultural Commission instead.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Muscali reached out with an interest in the Gulf Advisory, which I was happy to relinquish and said that I would take on Conservation Commission instead.
Awesome.
Yep.
Okay. Do you have all those changes?
It'll be on tape, but I.
Perfect, okay. All right, anything else? Any other changes?
Nothing else from me.
Okay, I would ask that the town manager's office get a draft out to us with the recorded changes, and thank you for that. Okay, we're gonna move into the consent agenda. I'm gonna read each item. If any Board member has an issue, please notify me as Chair and ask to hold the item. Licenses. Approve application for two-day special, one-day all-alcohol beverages license Silver Beach Improvement Association to be executed at the tennis courts located 6 West Ave, North Falmouth. Administrative orders. Approve grant of license to Bank of America for the installation of two freestanding signs on town property, 871 Main Street in Falmouth. Accept a donation from the Cape Cod Baptist Church in the amount of $500 to the Police Department donation account with great thanks. Approve water main easement that will service municipal police training facility at 71 Tech Park Drive. Okay, I would entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda. Second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, town manager, do you have a supplemental report?
No, Madam Chair, no supplemental.
Great. Okay, Select Board reports.
I would just comment that I attended the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting today, and it was really from my own request of consideration of relocating a sidewalk, a crosswalk in North Falmouth. But when I paid attention to the agenda, I noticed that they had the discussion about the proposed parking plan change in Woods Hole in front of the post office in the Pie in the Sky, where it's been an ongoing concern that, that traffic coming both ways. And the DPW Director was there, and he presented a, a plan to eliminate the parking on the side where the post office is. And a lot of residents were there and commented that there was concern about losing nine parking spaces. And I made the suggestion that I wonder if it might be wise to reach out to the owner of the property across the street and see if there's any chance of getting some space over there. I believe it's either Hui or MBL that owns that house up on the hill. And so, Peter McConity and one of the residents from Woods Hole, Dave Martin, who's an engineer, agreed to get together and see if they can work out a plan where that sidewalk might be moved back to accommodate the width and maintain the parking on both sides. So, that may come to us eventually if they determine that it's feasible. That's it for me.
Okay, Mr. Zalinski?
Well, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna be requesting two workshops this summer. One, I think this Board needs some training around relationships and responsibilities with the town manager. So, I would ask Mr. Renshaw to please look into our, our professional associations to be able to do that. And I have a couple of other things that I want to put on that agenda. And I also need to schedule a strategic planning meeting, and that will also happen this summer. And I had the dates on a sticky, and it's gone. So, I will send that out to you. And if everyone agrees with those dates, I would ask that we get a new calendar, because we've made some changes. We need to get that new calendar out to all Board members. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is it moved?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.